All right. Good evening and welcome to the October meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. Tonight, we have one agenda item. We will be hearing the L-COR site plan and also its associated rezoning and also the vacation associated with that. We will also be doing commission business. This is the only meeting we have on our calendar for October, so we will not be meeting for a recessed meeting. As always, if you're here to speak on our agenda item, please turn on your speaker slip to our clerk, Ms. Johnson. She will call the agenda item momentarily. Also, just a reminder to folks to kind of remove cell phones from the dais or other surfaces as they do interfere with the microphones. So with that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Item number one has three parts. One A is a vacation. One B is for rezoning, Z-2612-191. And one C is a site plan amendment, Site Plan Number 244. We have Michael Cullen, our Planning Division staff, to present this item this evening.
Welcome, Mr. Cullen.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, I'm Michael Cullen with the CPHD Planning Division. So this item includes three requests associated with the L-COR Verizon site development, including a proposed vacation of Old South Ead Street right-of-way, a rezoning from RAH 3.2 to CO Crystal City, and a site plan amendment for a new multifamily residential building with modifications of use regulations to include required parking, density exclusions, and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development. The site is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of 12th Street South and Southeast Street and is just over a quarter-mile from the Pentagon City Metro Station. The recently constructed Altera apartment building is to the north. The Lennox Club Apartments and the Doubletree Hotel are located to the east. And the site is bordered by 12th Street to the south and Old Ead Street right-of-way along the western site boundary. The site is approximately 40,000 square feet and includes a small area of Old Southeast Street right-of-way that is the subject of the proposed vacation. The site is occupied by an existing Verizon telecommunications facility and parking lot. The facility was approved by Site Plan 244 in 1986, which permitted the telecommunications facility and conceptual approval for a future Phase II residential development that was never constructed. The site is adjacent to the "teardrop parcel," a portion of land owned by the county, shown here in green outline and with remaining Old Ead Street right-of-way in yellow. Historically, the teardrop parcel was part of the same parcel comprising much of Parcel 1D of the Pentagon City PDSP, later known as Penn Place, which is highlighted here in the blue outline. Between 1969 and 1974, the Southeast Street intersection with Army-Navy Drive was reconstructed and realigned. In September 2013, the County Board approved a PDSP amendment for the Penn Place project, which included, among other actions, a commitment from the developer to transfer ownership of the teardrop parcel to the county and transfer of development rights, or TDRs, of base density from the teardrop parcel back to the Penn Place site, with a condition in the TDR resolution that obligated the county to record a restrictive covenant for the property that limits future use to public open space, recreational uses, and public access. A prior restrictive covenant established for the teardrop parcel also limits the height of buildings and structures to 60 feet. In January 2015, the County Board approved an amendment to Site Plan 2 at 400 Army-Navy Drive for construction of the Altera Building. The staff report for that site plan noted regarding the teardrop parcel that, quote, "The ultimate use of this site will undergo future consideration for how the site will be utilized by the county." So these images provide views around the site, including the Verizon building and parking lot, Ead Street looking south towards the Bartlett apartment building, the south parcel of the teardrop parcel area, existing walkway conditions adjacent to the site, the Altera apartment building, and the north parcel of the teardrop parcel area. The current GLUP designation is High Office Apartment Hotel, and the existing zoning is RH 3.2. The applicant has proposed rezoning to CO Crystal City. In addition to rezoning, the amendment application proposes a new 19-story multifamily building with 306 units, approximately 11,000 square feet of ground-floor retail space, and 148 total parking spaces in underground garage. The existing Verizon building will remain. Total density is approximately 6.5 FAR for the new building at a height of 200 feet above the average site elevation. Additional density would be achieved in accordance with the Crystal City Coordinated Redevelopment District through LEED Silver Certification and Arlington Green Building Priority Credits, committed affordable units on-site, streetscape improvement contribution, and a public open space contribution. I think I have slides that are hidden, but just to mention, the unit distribution is shown, or was intended to be shown, that outlines primarily one- and two-bedroom units. There are 87 studio units, 101-bedroom units, conceptually approved or proposed, 104 two-bedroom units, and then 15 two-bedroom with den units that we've labeled as three-bedroom units in the current layout. So the proposed parking ratio is consistent with the residential parking guidelines approved in 2017, which identifies specific parking requirements based on criteria such as housing affordability and distance to metro. The project located within the Jefferson-Davis Metro Corridor proposes a .43 spaces-per-unit ratio consistent with the guidelines. Site plan conditions provide a minimum visitor parking supply of .05 spaces per unit, which is 10 spaces, and then dedicated parking for each Type A accessible dwelling unit. In addition to base housing contribution for the site plan, under Section 1558 of the zoning ordinance, the developer has agreed to the provision of 12 onsite affordable units for additional density above the maximum density, and this is under Section 1559 of the ordinance. The total affordable unit commitment is for 60% AMI for 30 years and is divided between one- and two-bedroom units with two-bedroom units fully, two-bedroom units fully Type A accessible. And to confirm, the commitment includes five one-bedroom units and then seven two-bedroom units. So the subject site is within, was it within the Crystal City Coordinated Redevelopment District identified on the GLUP and subject to the recommendations of the Crystal City Sector Plan. The site is located in the northwest gateway area and is identified as a site for new development. The Sector Plan envisioned redevelopment across the teardrop parcel, which includes a number of development restrictions as mentioned earlier, so the proposal departs from the recommendation, recommended build-to-lines map, which is consistent with the previous Altera project at 400 Army-Navy Drive. The Sector Plan identifies a base density of 3.8 FAR for commercial and 4.8 FAR for residential uses and identifies a maximum 200-foot building height for the site. Additional density up to 200, 200 total building, 200 feet of total building height may be earned through commitments oriented towards achieving objectives of the Crystal City Sector Plan. The Sector Plan provides design guidelines for use as referenced in the redevelopment of Crystal City, and the project is generally consistent with these recommendations. These guidelines recommend that all new and substantially renovated buildings incorporate a design scheme that provides a distinct podium, middle, and top, and includes categories that address building frontage, tower separation, and coverage, building tops, and penthouses, and massing. Although the only street frontage identified in the Sector Plan is, that is, I guess, relevant to the, the site is 12th Street, the project is generally consistent with the recommended street sections on both 11th Street and with a 12, with a six-foot clear zone and 12th Street with an eight-foot clear zone. The Sector Plan emphasizes creating additional public spaces and notably recommends, quote, "As individual site plans are proposed for Crystal City, the county should look for opportunities to increase the public open space beyond what is shown in the public open space map." The goal of providing additional green spaces through the site plan development is outlined in Section 425 of the Sector Plan, which outlines further goals to ensure a mix of active and passive recreational uses, innovative designs for recreational facilities on project sites, and public ownership of public open spaces. In addition to achieving a number of Sector Plan goals, the project provides specific site improvements and community benefits, excuse me, community benefit commitments, including standard site plan benefits and commitments to achieving density such as the affordable housing commitment of 12 onsite CAFs, a $90,000 contribution that is intended for the Ead Street Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project, but may include improvements to 11th Street South that would facilitate coordination of a new street treatment associated with a new park, and a $1.4 million contribution that would support the planning and design of a new park at Southeast Street and Army-Navy Drive across the teardrop parcel site and could cover park construction on the south parcel. After the Site Plan Amendment was filed, staff recommended the S, recommended that the SPRC is an appropriate venue for defining the appropriate future use of the teardrop parcel, since this project presents an opportunity to provide open space improvements as part of a community benefits package. The teardrop parcel site is limited for redevelopment or construction purposes by its size, utility conflicts, regular configuration, as well as the aforementioned transfer of density off-site, as well as multiple restrictive covenants. This discussion was held at the second SPRC meeting on June 13, 2019, where committee members spoke overwhelmingly in favor of public park use of the space. Staff provided an overview of what a master park planning process coordinated by DPR could look like following County Board action on the L-COR project. This planning process would determine the design, use, and programming of the new park with input from all stakeholders. Public process for the project included three SPRC meetings between May and July and consideration by Transportation Commission, who recommended unanimous approval for the project. The project will be heard by Housing Commission on Thursday. So in closing, staff recommends approval for the proposed vacation of Old South, Old South Ead Street right-of-way, approval of the request to rezone the subject site from RAH 3.2 Multiple Family Dwelling and Hotel District to CO Crystal City Mixed Use Crystal City District, and staff recommends approval for the subject Site Plan Amendment for a 306-unit multifamily residential building with ground-floor retail with modifications of use regulations to include required parking, density exclusions, and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Ms. Collier, do you have a presentation on the vacation? Okay, thank you. We'll now turn to the applicant.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Josh White. I'm Vice President of Development with L-COR, and would like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here tonight to discuss a project that L-COR has been working on since 2016, and something that our team has spent diligent effort since that time to discuss the merits with you, with you this evening. Before we get started, just a kind of a brief overview of the Verizon project. The Verizon, and as you will see, it's 411th Street South. We affectionately call it the Verizon Project, given its proximity to the existing Verizon Switch Center. I can assure you that won't be the final name of the building. But the Verizon Project will enhance the flourishing 12th Street corridor, which has become really the retail spine that knits together Crystal City and Pentagon City by providing a architecturally significant mixed-use project that will border the eastern portion of this, of this corridor. Our goal with the Verizon Project is to create a unit mix that not only complements L-COR's other investment in Altera, but also delivers a residential program that is currently absent in Crystal City. Just a brief overview of the regional context. The site is obviously located in the northern quadrant of Crystal City, which provides excellent connectivity to Washington DC and northern Virginia. L-COR initially invested in this neighborhood in 2012 with the adjacent, again, with the adjacent Altera project due to the strong attributes of this market. The arrival of retailers like Whole Foods and Commonwealth Joe's and others along the 12th Street corridor have improved this area, and obviously, Amazon's recent announcement will certainly accelerate the growth of this market. Zooming in just a bit on the neighborhood context, the site is bordered by 11th Street to the north, Southeast Street to the west, 12th Street to the south, and the Verizon, Verizon Switch Center and Lennox Club Project to the east. It's located adjacent to Whole Foods, which is in the Bartlett project, and across from Penn Place, which everyone, I'm sure, is aware will be the future of Amazon head, Amazon headquarters. In case that's breaking news to anybody, please let me know. The site is located just, just outside the quarter-mile radius for the Pentagon City Metro, but enjoys several multimodal accessibility points via bus and other metro locations. As Michael alluded to, here are some of the images of the existing conditions. Altera delivered in 2018, which is just north of the project. Verizon Switch Center, which will stay, which will remain and continue to be operational is to the east of the project. The teardrop parcel is to the west of the site. And just to point out, L-COR has taken the opportunity to partner with the Crystal City bid to activate the existing parking lots. The bid has hosted a few events there, most recently, Amazon's Career Day and Oktoberfest and, and the seesaws, which were a big hit, except in December, which was a little cold. But moving on to the site constraints, there are a significant amount of constraints to this site. As mentioned, Verizon's building will remain operational. They have several utilities that run parallel to the eastern border and connect to 12th Street. In addition, Old Southeast Street used to run parallel to the property on the eastern border, and that included several below-grade utilities, which are still in place on this site. In addition to that, we have no access via 12th Street and no access via Ead Street, given our location. So 11th Street is our primary access into the building, although we have utilities surrounding us on, on all sides. For pedestrian circulation, primary pedestrian circulation will occur along 12th Street and along the western edge of the project. Verizon and Altera residents will utilize this connection as it's the most direct path to 12th Street and most of the transit options. The vehicular access, again, the primary access is along Army-Navy Drive, Southeast Street, and 12th Street. Access to the site is via 11th Street, and then we have a dedicated access with garage entrance and loading off of 11th Street. The building program, the building is approximately, or the site is approximately 39,600 square feet, which excludes the existing Verizon building, and L-COR is seeking rezoning from the RAH 3.2 to CO Crystal City. The total square footage of the project, as you can see, is approximately 272,000 square feet comprised of 260,000 square feet of residential space totaling 306 apartment units, dwelling units, and just over 1,000 square feet of ground-floor retail space. The mix, as Michael spoke to, the mix will be comprised of junior one-bedroom units to, ranging to two-bedroom and den units, with 12 units committed to onsite affordable housing. The project will be LEED Silver with two priority credits. Arlington's two priority credits, one for the optimized energy credit and a second for Energy Star Certification post-completion, which ensures that the building design of LEED actually starts to operate that way once it's delivered. And finally, the project will have two levels of below-grade parking, two and a half levels of below-grade parking, that accommodate 148 parking spaces and 141 bike spaces onsite, 18 of which will be dedicated toward retail bicycle parking. The residential parking ratio, per Arlington County's recently adopted Off-Street Parking Guidelines, the minimum parking requirement for the project is a .4. L-COR intends to park the project at a .43 spaces per unit, in addition to providing 10 dedicated visitor spaces and five spaces for Verizon. The next few slides are just to give you a context of the aerial. This provides you with a sense of how the Verizon Project interacts with its neighbors. As you will note, L-COR used the publicly available Penn Place Site Plan, but realizes that these revised plans will probably be before the commission before long, but again, just wanted to give you a sense of what's happening in the neighborhood. And here's another view. As you will note, we have a strong presence along 12th Street and Southeast Street in these views. Now we'll take kind of a tour around the project and speak about some of the views of the building. The building facade is comprised of glass, metal, and cementitious panel that respects the architecture and design of Altera, yet also stands proud and independent without yielding to the larger project to the north. The building angles slightly, which allows Altera to have visual, have a visual connection to the 12th Street corridor as well. And the sawtooth and cannon-lever designs on both the southern, on both lower and higher portions of the buildings create a depth and allow for more natural light to enter into the units. The existing residential lobby and retail will wrap the ground-floor space, creating an activated streetscape on all public-facing exterior facades. Whoa. Is that me? Excuse me, let me go back a few here. I think we're back. Thank you. Again, these are just some views of the various angles of the building, looking north along 12th Street, and then as you approach, looking on the, as you're approaching 12th Street, heading west as well. Focusing on the ground-floor level, the ground floor is comprised of various uses, including the residential lobby and retail and residential loading at the northern end of the project, and retail space wraps the southern corner of the project. The retail space will anchor the eastern end of the 12th Street corridor, as I alluded to earlier. L-COR envisions a combination of food and services for the retail space provided by local establishments to project a neighborhood atmosphere in this neighborhood. I think we have a unique opportunity to do that in this neighborhood, especially with, with our neighbors right next door. And as you can see, the typical floor plan has one elevator core and approximately 18 units per floor. The top-floor plan will include all of the amenity space for the project, and L-COR envisions, again, a combination of active and passive uses in this amenity space, taking advantage of the views from the site as well. The landscape plan here shows you just a general overview of how we interact with our neighbors on the site. And zooming in, we'll get into a bit more detail. As we focus more on the intersection of 12th Street and Southeast Street, the plan currently contemplates four retail vendors, but it could be a combination of several options. We're trying to remain as flexible as possible right now as we gauge interest from the market. Again, envisioning food and service at the project, which may include outdoor dining along 12th Street and also wrapping around on Southeast, the potential for there as well. And another important item to point out is we have a dining use on the easternmost portion. It's in your image here, it's on the top portion, that could also provide outdoor dining space for a, a retail tenant. Moving up toward the northern portion of our building, again, the northern portion of the project is, consists of the residential lobby and a lot of the loading in the back. It was very important to L-COR, again, given our investment in Altera, to treat all three sides of the building that have a public exterior-facing facade and activate those uses. As you might know, we have residential units along 11th Street at Altera, and we also have a residential lobby that exits directly adjacent to the project. So again, it was important for us to continue to wrap the facade around that, the 11th Street side, not turn our back on Altera. Additionally, it's contemplated that the pavers in the private drive of Altera will also be the same pavers that we use to, in the frontage of our building, to create not only a physical but a visual connection between the two projects as well. This is a perspective from 12th Street. Again, on the right-hand side of this image is the portion of the dining use that we might have for an outdoor food service. And we'll walk around the project from 12th Street as we turn right onto Southeast. Here's another image, illustrative image, of what the retail portion may look like as you're facing, or looking north along 12th Street. And then wrapping the building, so this is at the intersection of 12th and Southeast. As Michael mentioned, we have the opportunity for an open space use here, which, which we'll talk a little bit in greater detail in one minute. And this is the northern lobby. Again, we wanted to have that activated presence on the northern portion of the property and create a connectivity between Altera and the Verizon Project. As it relates to community benefits, L-COR has committed to providing 12 onsite affordable units in addition to the monetary contributions as part of our standard benefits. The 12 affordable units will consist of five one-bedroom units and seven two-bedroom units. L-COR will make an open space contribution to be used for the master plan and design of the entire teardrop parcel and the construction of the southern portion of this space, front and Verizon. Actually stepping back, and then there's, finally, there's a monetary contribution to off-site transportation improvements. Focusing just briefly on the open space commitment, again, the open space has been an item that L-COR has focused on, not only through our entitlement process with Altera back in 2012, but also with the Verizon Project as well. As the commissioners might know, it was originally intended to be the streetcar turnaround, although that was abandoned when we were going through the entitlement process with Altera. And now we have an opportunity to, to provide open space in a, in a neighborhood that is desperately seeking it. What we would encourage a discussion this evening about, or what we would like to better understand, is there's a commitment right now to have a master, have the funds committed to a master plan of both portions of this open space, but only funding generated enough at this time, we believe, to, to construct the southern portion. The southern portion of the space is intended to be more passive, just given its size. It's much smaller than the northern portion, and not to mention, it has countless utilities running beneath it, so there's limited options on what you might be able to do in that space. The northern portion is intended to be more of the active open space, and L-COR believes that it's imperative that we deliver both of these spaces concurrently and contemporaneously with us delivering our building and prior to Amazon opening their doors next door. So again, would welcome a conversation about how we might be able to achieve that. And that, oh, and I'm sorry, here's one more image of looking from the Altera, a view from Altera looking south towards the project. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We have one speaker this evening, Rob Mandel.
Mr. Mandel, good evening.
Good evening. Hopefully, my phone doesn't do any of the beeping stuff. Sorry. I don't normally do this, but it was short notice for me. My name's Rob Mandel. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Crystal City Business Improvement District. I'm very pleased to be here to lend our support to another valuable addition to the Crystal City neighborhood, bringing much-needed additional residential units, as well as contributing to the continuing growth of the 12th Street retail corridor, a part of Crystal City and Pentagon City that we see really linking the two neighborhoods together, which increasingly is an important part of my line of work. In concert with the Altera Project, this project brings the opportunity and the possibility of over an additional acre of open space. As you recall, this wasn't envisioned in the Sector Plan, and the County Board charged staff to try and figure out opportunities and ways to deliver an additional five acres throughout the Crystal City Sector Plan area, and this is one of the, I think, one of the most opportunistic and best opportunities to actually whittle away at that five acres. I think it's also important to point out, in addition to the $1.4 million contributed as part of this project, the Altera had an equally, almost equally a large amount of funding dedicated to open space. So you're looking at almost $3 million that was contributed in this general vicinity to deliver open space. I think knowing how long it's been, excuse me, since the opening of the Altera, the cancellation of the streetcar, I think it's only, I think it's appropriate to ask that, you know, we really have an opportunity to deliver a park concurrently really have an opportunity to deliver a park concurrently with the opening of this second project. You know, having another open space that's vacant and unactivated for empty number of years is a real disservice, I think, to the commitment that has been made for open space to the community, not just the residential community, but the business community that is currently thriving throughout the area, and particularly along 12th Street. I understand that it is likely to be the county's responsibility to deliver this park. Feel free to correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I do think it's very incumbent to think about the timing. Everything's about the timing on this park space, so I encourage, I think, echo, echo the points from the applicant about having a conversation about how we really facilitate and encourage delivery of this space, completion of this master plan of this site, and deliver an open space that can immediately contribute to the environment of the Crystal City neighborhood and Pentagon City neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Is there a last public speaker, Madam Clark? Do we have any commissions with us? No. Okay, then the matter's now before the commission. First, want to turn to Commissioner Lintelme for his report, before going to Commissioner McSweeney.
You know, thank you. This was before the Transportation Commission last Thursday, October 3rd. It was one of the items that we had, were action items. Overall, the Transportation Commission was quite happy with this project. We felt that the parking ratios are appropriately low, noting retail, for example, is zero, which is nice. There are provisions for bicycles, there are provisions for the pickup and drop-off. The, excuse me, the loading dock in the back had been changed to be more acceptable. That was a positive also. The actual vacation of the portion of Old Southeast was, had virtually no discussion whatsoever. The overall site plan itself, again, the action for us was seven to zero, same with the vacation, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you much, very much, Commissioner Lintelme. Commissioner McSweeney, who is our SPRC Chair.
Thank you. So, I know that you all received my four-page update on, or overview of what we discussed at the SPRC. I'm not going to go through all of it, I'm just going to hit the highlights. But, basically, you know that before us tonight, the commission is being asked to act on specifically three items. We are asked to find that the vacation of the 46 square feet of the Old Southeast Street is consistent with our adopted comprehensive plan. We are asked to recommend rezoning the entire area under consideration from RAH 3.2 to CO Crystal City. And we are asked to recommend approval of the development as outlined in the submission, the applicant's submission in the staff report. So during the SPRC meetings, there were many questions we had, and many that were answered, actually. It was, I think, I would characterize it as a very good give and take. I think as a result of a lot of the questions that were asked, the applicant came back to the next meeting and actually started the meeting by addressing the outstanding items from the last meeting. So that was greatly appreciated. In terms of what we specifically spoke about, I've listed several things here. We did discuss architecture, design, and massing, and there were considerable changes that were made to the architecture as a result of the comments. You know, I've specified some here, I believe, actually, you went through a lot of them. But, there had been a belief that maybe the back part of the building did not sufficiently, was not as sufficiently interesting as the rest of the building, as the front part of the building. And so changes were made to actually make it more interesting and make all four sides consistent. There were some initial questions about the density exclusions, which were cleared up during the process, so the ones that are in the report, I think, are fairly standard for us, or for a project. The environmental building elements and materials, there were question, there were a lot of questions about them, but they, the applicant did demonstrate the skin system during one of the SPRC, the third one SPRC meeting. They brought the materials, and as mentioned, the building will achieve LEED Silver Version 4. In terms of retail access and relationship to open space, the community specifically around the table wanted to be sure that the retail reflected neighborhood, was neighborhood serving retail, noting that retail equivalents are allowed. There were questions about detail on entrances, how the side of the building would interact with the proposed open space, and so there were many different views shown with entrances and open space, and ideas about how that open space could look. We talked about the retail wrapping as well. In terms of the general transportation, transit, and parking, the site is very well-served by public transportation. The loading dock questions, again, were resolved during the process. The 11th Street drop-off, which was, I think, a chief concern of a lot of people, because it would perhaps negatively affect the continuous flow of pedestrians and bicyclists between the two open space parcels, that was moved. And general site circulation was seen as good. There's going to be delivery of sidewalks where there weren't before, or correct, or cleaning up sidewalks that are broken, repairing them, specifically along 12th Street. There was a desire that sidewalks be eight feet all the way around, without cafes encroaching on them, but I think the eight feet is actually achieved on, definitely on 12th. And parking, there were no objections to the parking. ADA accessibility was reviewed. The building will have ADA Type A units, and two will be committed affordable. In terms of trees and green space, there were a lot of questions about the trees. Specifically, there was concern about being able to put trees on the open space parcels, because there are some undergrounding of utilities and other things there, but we were told that generally, we could have trees on that space. In terms of the public green space, this was a key element. Through every single meeting, the community did raise this issue. They've been looking for delivery of open space. This was, this is a wonderful opportunity to achieve some open space that wasn't initially planned. Many people urged that it not be overdesigned, and others did, a couple of people did express an interest in having a dog area, but, and some asked that it not be turf. But, basically, the takeaway is that the community is really focused on the development of these parcels. And it was definitely a primary interest of the neighborhood representatives to the SPRC. In terms of private green space, there's also some delivery of rooftop green space as well. I do have a recommended discussion outline, which follows pretty much the things I just laid out, overall building design, density exclusions, environmental impact, retail, transportation circulation, green space and trees. And then what I'd like to do is, at the last, if we could, talk a little bit about the community benefits, because I think everybody's seen the letters from Judy Freshman and Krista All, and they were questioning the balance of the mix potentially, and specifically the timing, I think, of the delivery of the park. So, I think it is a valid question, maybe, that we could talk about, how long is reasonable for a community to wait for a benefit such as green space, when a project is actually realized? And so, I'll have some, I'll have a motion to that effect.
Thank you for a very well-run SPRC process, and also a very comprehensive presentation of your report. So Commissioner McSweeney has walked through her discussion outline. Are there other things that people want to add? Yes, Commissioner Guerin.
I'd like to add parking and discussion of the condo conversion option.
Okay. Others? Commissioner Hughes.
Within the community benefits, I'd like to discuss the affordable housing contribution.
Okay. We'll add that. Others? Commissioner Yakimini, looking inquisitive.
Because I just had a couple sort of factual questions that don't fit under these.
All right. We can just throw some factual questions, perhaps, at the top, if that's amenable. Other things, okay. Well, you do have the catch-all other at the end, so people see things along the way, they can let us know. So Commissioner Yakimini, do you want to kick us off with a few factual questions?
Yes. For the applicant, when is your, should everything go well this evening and with the county board? When would you anticipate breaking ground, and when should the weather and everything cooperate, you believe that you would be finished?
So we intend to break ground probably, not probably, third quarter of 2020. The building time is about 24 to 26 months, so that would put us at the delivery in second or third quarter of 2022.
Excellent, okay. I have a second question. Where is it that you are planning to do your staging?
We have a site logistics plan from our general contractor that allows us to keep our staging within our site and using the southern portion of the Tear Drop parcel.
But not the northern?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Yakimini. Let's move on to, if there aren't any other kind of general factual questions, let's move on to overall building design. So, all the kind of parenthetical topics there, frontage, podium, architecture, tower, building top, penthouse, et cetera. So, any questions on building design? I will say that I was the commissioner that Commissioner McSweeney referenced, who wanted it to be designed in the back, just as it was in the front, and I commend you on improving the design, so thanks for that. It does look better. So, thank you. Commissioner Morton.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to echo those comments. I thought it was a strong initial submission, and I appreciate both the attention to the building itself and the opportunity you made of a really weird, irregular site. I thought you were able to make a creative design that was still contextual. And I do appreciate both you bringing, from the very beginning, very clear views. I mean, I think among the SPRCs I participated, and we didn't have to ask that many follow-up questions, because you were able to bring some three-dimensional views, some contextual views. Maybe that's also kudos to staff and Commissioner McSweeney for asking for those things, but I just would like to go on record as saying it was strong, and it, I think, sped things along a bit, that you were well-prepared ahead of time, so.
And perhaps counsel for advising his client. Perhaps. Good. Anything else on, on the overall building design? All right, let's move on to density exclusions. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Siegel.
So sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
I did have a question on something that referenced the types of, numbers of rooms of the apartments. Would you prefer to have that question when we discuss condo conversion? Perhaps we can do it then, or can, I can ask it now, whatever you think is right.
Is it just a general question about that, or is it more?
I was just wondering, you made a state, well, oh, here it goes.
Just go ahead and ask it, Commissioner Siegel.
You said that your unit mix, one junior, one-bedroom junior, two bedrooms, et cetera, would complement what's in the Alter. Can you just elaborate? I don't remember exactly what the Alter, and what that complementarity is.
We really envisioned the Verizon project as almost a sister building to the Alter project. The North Tower of Alter, Alter is separated into two separate towers. The North Tower of Alter has average unit sizes around 1,100 square feet. The South Tower has average unit sizes around 850 square feet. That's what you typically see for a Class A product in Crystal City. That's what we've seen in some of our competitive projects.
The North, the North Tower?
The South, I'm sorry, the South Tower.
The 1,100.
Right, around 850 is typical in Crystal City.
850, okay.
The Verizon project is closer to 725, 700 to 725, and it's really lessons learned from what we've seen at Alter. Our more efficient units, what we call our junior one-bedrooms or junior two-bedrooms, which are priced more competitively within that building mix, were the first ones to be leased at Alter. I think there's a real need, we think there's a real need for providing diversity, providing diversity of housing options, and that's what Verizon's intended to do.
Almost missing middle-ish kinds of thinking.
Correct.
Is the, real quick, is the Alter leased up?
Yes, it's at 85% leased today. It started leasing in September of last year.
Stuck on another question there, sorry.
All right, that's good. Thank you. Okay, density exclusions. Commissioner McSweeney and staff kind of walked through these, I think, but any questions on them? They're pretty standard. Okay. Moving on to the environmental impact, so the, this is a LEED building, obviously, LEED Silver Plus, and there's a green roof here. Any questions on that? Okay.
I have my question there.
I'm going to throw in transportation. The retail on-site, on the ground floor, retail, any questions about that? I'm going to go to Commissioner Lintelme, and go down the road here. Go ahead.
The only question I had, and this was also a raised at SPRC, is a little bit of concern about the retail space that fronts on East Street, how viable that's going to be, because it's really pretty much off on its own, and it's a bit of a walk to get from 12th up to that. You mentioned something about flexibility, does that mean, because right now, the way the plan shows, there'd be three retail spaces. Are you amenable to combining them, or shifting the walls around, or subdividing them further? But, like I said, that, have you done any marketing to know whether that East Street frontage would be usable? Because the worst thing for everybody would be if it just can't be leased.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you for the question. We, maybe three quick responses. First, our architect that we hired actually wanted to continue the retail further up into our project, into the residential lobby as well, because they believe so strongly in Southeast. With our Whole Foods being an anchor kind of right there at 12th Street and Southeast, there's so much activity already there, and certainly with Amazon coming in next door, they thought that'd be a great opportunity. Just one item to note, that the northernmost portion of retail is approximately, and I might look 100 feet away from 12th Street, so although on a site view, it might look like it's further up onto Southeast Street, it's only about a two-minute walk from the corner of 12th Street. And finally, in the flexibility, I think we are, we are certainly open to several options. We've shown four retail spaces today, because they can demise pretty easily that way. We would certainly entertain if somebody wanted to take a larger space or a smaller space within those four, that we can demise those accordingly, so that we can accommodate what the market might bear. Finally, I know we've had some conversations with JBG. We are, have a close relationship with JBG Smith, and speaking with the retail brokers in this community, and who might be working on this project, trying to figure out how we can work in partnership, so that we're not chasing the exact same tenants, and we are complementing one another, being across the street from one another.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Siegel, and then Commissioner, yeah.
So, you had said that you would, you were looking for local candidates for your retail space. Can you just describe that process a little bit, and which, how local?
Look, ideally for us, I mean, the ideal tenant, and I don't want to, I don't want to pigeon us into anything, but would be a Commonwealth Joe's, right, who's, you know, a local tenant to Arlington. There will be some national tenants who will want to be in this market, that might be a good fit for us, although we are looking to have more of a local presence, right? We are long-term holders of real estate, and we're good stewards of our neighborhood, so we want to encourage, you know, the growth of local neighborhood retailers as well. And that'll just all kind of be the process that we look at as we're entertaining, you know, who might be the right fit. We think we have an incredible opportunity to kind of cultivate the retail here. We've, and I hate to use this term on record, but we've been told it's not a matter of who, it's a matter of who we'd like to select, given what's happening in this neighborhood right now, so.
Oh, right.
There's, it's going to be a long process. We're going to start early, so that we can be mindful and thoughtful about who we're selecting, but that's probably the approach we'll take.
Well, I certainly do commend that effort to look within Arlington. Commonwealth Joe is obviously a pilot, a prime example, a successful example, and so, good luck with that. I think that's really great. Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'm encouraged to hear your confidence about being able to fill the retail space, but I have similar concerns that if it goes empty, what does that mean for the neighborhood? I've heard creative ideas from commissioners on different, from people on different commissions about, you know, if we have a space that's been empty for a long period of time, are there opportunities to do pop-up restaurants or pop-up markets? And the answer has always been, no, we can't, the applicants or the developers don't let us, there's problems with insurance. So I was wondering about, do you have principles, if you have a space that's open for a long time? If you have a space that's open for a long time, are there opportunities to do pop-ups and things that might be more accessible for local people?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we haven't specifically explored pop-ups, but just anecdotally to share something with you that we're doing at Altair. We've, we have some amenity space that's not being utilized as we thought, and so we're starting to repurpose that space already, and that building just delivered 12 months ago. I think it's a testament, again, to Elcor being a long-term holder and trying to figure out what fits within the community. Given that that space is along our residential lobby as well, we've entertained where you can draw that line between the residential lobby and the retail space. It can fluctuate a little bit, whether or not you create, what we've seen a huge demand for is, I don't, we work like space. There's so many residents these days who are working from home, so can you create a cooperative, you know, office space that people can work from home from? So, we are certainly in agreement that, you know, a retail that's not leasing certainly doesn't do anyone any good, so we certainly entertain options.
And in addition to that, sorry, a great example of that is our partnership with the Crystal City bid in order to take advantage of the temporary surface parking lot, and we've hosted countless events. The rest of the fall is completely programmed, so we don't want to lose an opportunity for us to activate a space, and pop-up retail is definitely something that, it's not necessarily in vogue, but it is very much prevalent.
All right, thank you. There's nothing else on retail, let's move on to transportation, so, and site circulation questions. So, I know Commissioner Guerin had one.
I didn't see it in here. Do you have EV parking?
I'm not sure if we've committed to it. We certainly have it at Altair, and we would provide it here.
You would provide it here?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gibson, do we request it generally of everyone? Just so I know not to ask this on every project?
No, this is not an element of our code or our parking requirements. One of the things that we've asked in the past is that buildings consider how to get their electrical systems situated to accommodate future needs, but not specifically requiring that.
But what I'm hearing is you intend to provide some. Before I end my question, I want to echo some of the positive sentiments you've heard from the other commissioners, in that I am very grateful and heartened to see how receptive you were to the issues that were raised throughout the SPRC process. Sometimes we get that, and sometimes we don't, and I do think it makes for a more positive process going forward, and I do want to thank you for that, and hope you continue to in the future.
So quickly.
Sorry, Commissioner, sorry, just to interrupt quickly. To answer your question, it is, the EV spaces are a part of LEED, which we have pursued again in our other projects, and we would intend to do that here as well.
Great. I have a quick follow-up, and I'll come to you, Commissioner Hughes. Mr. Gibson, so is the staff generally push for sort of EV capable, in the sense that, or at least you're saying that the building has the electrical capacity for EV, even if the kind of conduit isn't running, things like that?
So this is an area where we recommend, we don't push or require.
Oh, I certainly understand that, but I'm sort of wanting to understand what staff would be kind of recommending. Is it just EV spaces generally, or is it all the above? I'm wondering, so there's different gradations of electric vehicle parking. There's EV capable, there's, you know, EV-ready, and then there's actually an EV charging installed. And I'm wondering, sort of, as staff is talking to applicants, I know it's not part of our standard site plan conditions, but I'm wondering, as you're having these kind of conversations...
So we certainly encourage them, particularly through the LEED elements, those things, to meet those EV provided, so the charging stations are there. And then look at the future flexibility for growing that to more than what we see today. I mean, there's only a few percentage of cars that are charging today, but that's growing as time goes on, and I'm sure that our building official will have to take a look at how to accommodate that in retrofitting garages in the future.
Sure. I think it's something that, in light of the recent community energy plan that I think is on some of our minds, and so, I know we're sort of limited by building code and other things, what we can and can't do, but, or require at this stage, but I think it's something that is really kind of front of mind for folks up here, which is, I think, why we're asking some more questions. Commissioner Hughes, and then Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. I guess I'll ask the applicant real quick. Has any of your buildings yet been sort of anticipated or planned for e-bike charging locations in the bike shared place? I know this is sort of, I was on e-bike this weekend, so I'm just loving it, and I've got to ask this question, is there a demand out there yet from your applicant and your resident community for that facilities, and are you thinking about that ahead of time?
That is something that we'll definitely feel during design, to see where the demand is. We have space within the bike parking areas and facilities, but again, that's going to be something that, as we roll through design, and when we think about amenities, that we want to provide future residents that, you know, will contemplate on, but nothing as of right now.
Commissioner. Yes, sometimes something as simple as having just outlets that are available, especially for those that can charge overnight, you know, is sufficient, and you don't necessarily need, you know, really, you don't need much more capacity, you could have a 110, you know, level one charging, essentially. Commissioner Siegel?
Just a question, you may not have the answer. I did actually think that the EV capability was part of the LEED point system. Do you know, do any of you know what the provision is for LEED for EV? You provide it, do you provide something in particular, EV-ready, actual plugs?
All of our buildings to date that are LEED certified have EV charging stations.
Meaning, you actually have the implement that goes, plugs into the car itself?
Correct. We've delivered buildings in the past, three buildings in the past 18 months, and each one of those have EV charging stations that are operable and used by residents.
And so that is part of the LEED Silver Point Four or Four?
I'm not necessarily sure if it's a necessity, but it is inherent of.
So for, to earn LEED, you don't have to get every single point, correct? You just?
But they get, they do get points for that.
Correct.
And you do get points for that?
Correct. There's a menu of options in order to pursue a certain point total, and that is part of the menu options.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Morton?
Just switching gears a bit, thank you again for the changes you made to 11th Street. I noted in the staff report, it talked about, there'd be some sort of visual indication that there was pedestrian priority. I know sometimes this gets worked out later, but I'm wondering, given that there's Penn Place and Met Park, and are there going to be similar shared streets there? And I know Mr. Gibson remembers with the American Legion building some concerns about the legibility, you know, what do these mean? Are you anticipating kind of a coherent system with all of these new projects that will have a consistent treatment that indicates pedestrian priority?
So, this is an area where I think the commission and our commission, our review process is quite beneficial. The pedestrian priority and shared street classifications are relatively new to Arlington, and our consistent implementation of those from site point to site plan is something that we are learning from. So, I know that as we look at these larger campus projects, the shared streets and the transportation networks, very consistent with trends, are becoming more focused on the pedestrian environment than the auto. And so, I wouldn't be surprised with the Penn Place, but I haven't been part of that. But, there is no set of standard design guidelines that the county has started to work out for shared streets to have a uniform feel from place to place. And that, that might be okay, because this, some of these shared streets help define the neighborhoods that they're in. And so I think that, as the commission continues to talk about these, we'll get more guidance and be able to both advise staff and the county board.
I just have a question for the applicant. The street pavers, or, you know, that are on the corner, 11th Street and southeast, it mentions in the 4.1 that you're using the kind of similar paver to what's at the Altair. I'm wondering, and maybe I'll also ask staff about this, just how those have held up over time? I am concerned, you know, that's the ADA ramp is right there, and sort of, pavers don't always hold up. I'm just kind of wondering if you could speak to maintenance, how well they've kind of stayed, you know, in the sidewalk?
Sure, absolutely. We had the same concern when we were building Altair. We actually built a portion of the private drive ahead of schedule so that we could run the construction trucks over it during construction, because we figured if it could withstand that, I mean, it's not really intended to be a heavily trafficked drive. It managed very well. It has, we have not seen any maintenance issues with it in the 12 months that it's been open and operational. In fact, it also has lighting in it as well that has remained solid, and we haven't had any issues. So, given the fact that the southern portion will be along our frontage on the Verizon project, will be pedestrian-friendly, there is no street traffic on that space, we think it'll hold up very well.
All right. Yeah, we have several examples around the county where it hasn't worked so well, and have been sort of, there's some great examples in Ballston that actually have been pretty bad for a number of years, and so, you know, encourage you, if they do kind of start to malfunction, it's within your boundaries here on the diagram, so they can become, you know, mobility issues pretty quickly. All right, anything else on, yes, Commissioner Peterson?
I have a very basic question on vacations, and I'm wondering, are we more or less selling the land to the applicant, and is the $1.2 million, does the county consider this the correct appraisal for what the land is going to be worth in the next 12 to 24 months, or is that the appraisal based on last year's, pre-Amazon decision?
We are selling the property. The planning commission just has to find that the vacation is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and does not usually get into compensation. However, it is based on an appraisal. I believe the appraisal was provided by the applicant, and it was around the time of Amazon, but probably before that occurred.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I can confirm with, it came out of the Transportation Commission. This is off of the MTP. Old Eats was removed from the MTP. It's still, the right-of-way is still owned by the county, but it's no longer on the master transportation plan.
So, could I direct this to Commissioner Landtelleme? What does that mean in terms of value or in terms of process?
They're free to sell it, but as far as value, that, we didn't get into at all.
We don't normally get into value, but we have, it's not that we can't ask questions about value. Values come up with wraps. It came up with some other parcels where we were really, with wraps, we were trying to understand what the value actually was, we couldn't figure it out. And that has been an issue, but I'm not going to make it an issue tonight, I'll just leave it there.
Yeah.
This is a very small portion of old southeast that they're requesting be vacationed. It's a very small strip that's closest to their building.
All right. So, are there any other transportation-related or site circulation questions? If not, let's move on to green space and trees. Any questions? Okay, Commissioner Guerin.
Mr. Beach, I'm so glad to see you here tonight. I think we're going to have a really robust discussion about how we can tie development of the buildings to development of the park. So, I'm going to start this out, but I really want to hear what my colleagues think about this. Is that something we can do? Can you tell us what happened to the Altair contribution? Is there a way we can tie development of the park, including the community engagement process, to specific milestones in the development process?
Just, just real quick while they're conferring, so they can speak to the larger planning and allocation side, but just, their last part of your question, which was about the timing, we do tie the contributions to timing, particularly to a given CO, and that kind of changes depending on the contribution. But, in terms of like, when the contribution is made, that is set in the conditions.
Understood. I think we're looking for more when the actual community engagement process will be undertaken and completed, and when we can expect the park to be completed, if we can tie that to some sort of milestone, even if it's X years after CO. And also, I am curious what happened to the Altair contribution.
Mr. Beach, welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Just to clarify, Scott McPartlin is here too, because he will be the point of contact for us on this project, but I am here for these type of questions. So the contribution for the Altair is in a trust and agency account, and so it's sitting there. I don't have the exact language in front of me, but I believe it is for Crystal City Public Spaces and Other, I think is, Open Spaces and Other. So the county has received the money, and it is in a trust and agency account.
Just confirming, it's in a trust to be used in Crystal City area?
It would be used per the site plan conditions, and I believe it is associated with the Crystal City area.
Okay, and then, if my colleagues are going to ask follow-up on the same question about how we tie development, then go ahead. Thank you.
So I saw Commissioner Hughes and then Commissioner Yakimini. Oh, Commissioner Yakimini has, or Commissioner Hughes has deferred to Commissioner Yakimini.
I have actually several questions that go with this, but just keeping with the theme about tying to it. I think it's Condition 57 that talks about tying the contribution to, for the public open space to the first partial certificate of occupancy. So that's pretty far down the way, right? If you, the guys had said that they believe it would be second, third quarter of 2022, so that, that money is sort of tied to something in 2022, right? That's about when you would start to occupy the building. So, there are other milestones, and we see some of them in our conditions for other things. For instance, if we thought about, thinking that the money would be more useful as we have further discussions for planning, so that things could be opened concurrently, we could ask or suggest that the milestone be the Shell &amp; Core permit, which comes much sooner, thus allowing time to do planning so that things can be done. I'm just saying, I don't believe that's, whether it's desirable, whether staff supports that is one thing, but it, those are, that's another demarcation that we could use. It's a thing, right, that could be a trigger.
That's correct, and actually, that is what I was referring to, is sort of this parameter and this condition. Couple points of clarification. One, you're correct, in general, in the timing, many of these contributions in past projects, the Altair being a case in point, are actually sort of often later in the timeline. The Altair was actually tied to the master CO, which is the absolute last CO that, you know, developer pulls. But your point is well-taken, and as you know, this is still a draft, and I think we still need to discuss some of the timing aspects, because we know that there's the intent of having a public planning process sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes, and then, I'll come over this way.
Commissioner Scholl, can the applicant respond?
Yes.
We would be happy to provide some of those funds earlier if we could have a commitment that they would be used specifically for this site and the planning of this site.
Two hearts that beat as one.
Correct.
Yeah. So, yes, we did get, as Commissioner McSweeney noted, letters from the neighbors and civic associations advocating for this very point. Commissioner Hughes?
Could we switch real quick on the applicant's presentation to the one slide that has the Amazon giant blob in the middle? Because this comment revolves around timing, because I want to make sure all my fellow commissioners are thinking about this as we move forward, because I am happy to hear, thank you. So, this is great for a moment. So as we all know, Met Park 6, 7, and 8 is a current site plan process. We're engaged at the moment with whatever the green blobs are in the center of that entire complex. We know that to the north of that... We know that to the north of that site, there is a green blob in the plan for what that site will hold, what it will ultimately hold, no one knows. And then we have green blobs here to the east of this site. We can't think of all three of these sites as independent. They are joined, and so a master planning process and the timing of which I think is important for the county staff to engage in and think about. That's my comment on thinking about, it's nice to have things earlier, and I want to, I'll make some points about that later, but when we're thinking about all the questions here, it's very important to remember, these are going to, all three function as unified, sort of conjoined parks. And how they speak, how each one helps each other, how they don't duplicate and replicate, is going to be a much more difficult puzzle that may not necessarily work perfectly with the timing, the opening of your building. So, that's just a comment with respect to timing. I'll ask a few more, Commissioner Scholl, to hit some other options.
All right. Thank you. So, we're going to go to Commissioner Steinberg, because we haven't heard from you, and we'll come back this way.
Thank you. I think it, I think it is important to think in the context and understanding that there will be other projects coming down that do have additional green space. I understand that conceptually. I also find myself very persuaded that the neighborhood has waited a long time for this, that this is funds that I think are tied back to 2013, that the perfect should not be the enemy of the good, and that if we're in a situation where we can give something back now that the community desperately wants, that the community has been very clear, and honestly, probably more patient than I would have been, all things considered, I don't see a reasoning to kind of further make them sit on their hands. I think that if you can look at this in stage and still plan for what's coming down the line, and be able to have green space that does work with each other, and not necessitate duplication if you are thinking about it in a planned capacity and thinking about it as in these phases. But I also think that if we're waiting for everything to be able to kind of hit the ground running at once, we're going to be, I'm going to be very old, and I'm not really interested in making the neighborhood wait quite that long. So, I appreciate the developers' willingness to provide funding sooner rather than later to have this benefit kind of move forward at this time. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Siegel, Commissioner Guerin, and then Commissioner Weir.
So, I have two comments to make. One, I would really support something I think I heard the developers say, which was basically to time the delivery of New Park North and South to the delivery of the Verizon building, so that you get building and park at the same time. Two points about that. It does accord with what Commissioner Steinberger just said. The community would like that. I would also say that I think, part B of what I want to, well, back up. I don't know that, I want to express the sort of end result, the performance result, rather than try to parse through when to time the deployment or dedication of funds and then you wait for the investment of funds and to sort of figure out how the process works. I would, I would leave it up to the county as long as the county understands that the commission, I think we'll find this out, feels some urgency about the delivery of the amenity that was to mitigate the building to go along with the delivery of the building. So, that's where I stand on that. As far as these two parcels go, with respect to what is now planned at Penn Place, granted, we're going to see some change in that. What is now planned at Penn Place was developed by Olin Company, I believe. We went through park planning. Fernando spent $500,000 on it. It's already coordinated with the Met Park spaces, and we will be going through a Met Park planning process, park planning process. Those two planning processes, those two parks, really do need to be planned with each one in mind when we plan the other one. I see that as less important for these. They're kind of, certainly the south portion is slim, it's little. I don't see, and I believe we're going to see in the Penn Place, Amazon parcel, buildings lining the streets. I think I've heard that 11th Street will somehow go through, and as Amazon is planning that area, they're aware of that. Final point is, the community has not asked for a lot of stuff. They want open space, green space. So, with all of that, I don't really see that it would be all that informative to wait for a Penn Place to come, to come in.
Thank you. Commissioner Guerin, and then Commissioner Weir.
Thank you. I wanted a little more information about what the community engagement process might look like, given that we sometimes hear from the folks in Crystal City, Pentagon City, that they want to make sure their vision is balanced with the countywide vision, and a lot of our planning processes sometimes have countywide surveys.
So, we envision, once the funding is obtained, we envision a county-led distributed process, which is Guelphian democratic process, which typically includes a series of open houses, which I'll get into a little more detail in a moment, as well as a couple of online engagement opportunities. Typically, the first open house is a visioning session. We invite the community to join us in an open house, and we have subject matter experts throughout the open house, county experts, the development team, and essentially, interested parties get individualized attention, and we're there to answer any questions. They're there to help provide their visioning, their feedback. We typically have opportunities for them to write their ideas down, so on and so forth. We provide, you know, an overview of the site, some background, some context, site constraints, parameters, precedent images to evoke some conversation. So, that really provides us with an idea of the community's goals and how, what kind of park they see moving forward. So, from that information, we bring it back with the consultant team, staff, development team, so on and so forth, and we develop three to five very distinct alternatives. So, at the next open house, you, we get a better idea of what the community is thinking in terms of the look and feel, and what types of park uses that they're preferring, and the types of treatment, and essentially, you know, everything from circulation to relationships, to the program, to how heavily programmed or not programmed it is. From that, we hold the third open house, which is, depending on how the process goes, it may be, if it's, if we're reaching some, some really shared goals fast, it might be one concept, and then everybody might weigh in on that. Or it could be two concepts with some, some distinct options. And then finally, we communicate the final plan and, you know, allow the community their final thoughts. Now, throughout this, we also do online engagement, which helps us further assess what, what kind of park we're looking at. And we've done this for a number of projects with really, really successful results. RHP Plus, Penn Place, Three Oaks Park, we're going to do it with Roslyn Plaza, with Queens Court Playground. So, this model has really, really been successful for us. That's what we envision.
Thank you, Mr. McPartlin. When could we initiate such a process? And is there anything to preclude undertaking this during the initial development of the proposal?
Yes. So, we can start the process once we secure the funding. The consultant of the, as you can see in the proposed condition, number 57, is approximately $1.4 million in that condition. The consultant fees are a substantial part of that amount, and once we have it secured, we can concurrently hit the ground running with the logistics as well as securing a consultant. However, we find it to be really beneficial to have the consultant at the very first open house. So, it's really contingent upon when we receive the funding.
Okay. We have a list. I'll put you all on it. Commissioner Weir is next, and Commissioner Hughes, Yakimini, we'll go around.
Thank you, Mr. Scherer. I'm a little uneasy at the, at the suggestion, and maybe I'm just being prickly in reading this, so I apologize if, if this isn't what's being suggested by any of my colleagues. But I'm a little uneasy at the suggestion that, that we advocate for anything that would sidestep the process, that I think that the Crystal City Civic Association has accurately described in its letter, that we do a countywide analysis of what the needs are, and then proceed to do park planning and design based on that. And, you know, I, I think that if, if the Crystal City Civic Association accurately describes county policy in expressing their concerns, you know, I think that we risk setting a dangerous precedent when saying that, for whatever local-based reasons, we are going to try to get this park planning process or open space planning process somehow moved ahead at a faster pace than, than what the normal procedures would require.
So, I don't think that's the characterization, that's not how I would characterize their letter. I just think that as others, like Commissioner Guerin, were asking, how do we get this sooner? And as Commissioner Yakimini was asking about just having the kind of triggering event to have the community planning process that Mr. McPartlin walked through, just, which is a standard thing as he walked, we've done this many times, just have that triggering event to kick the funding into gear so that we can hire the consultants and move forward, not be one of the latter actions, but be one of the earlier, you know, certificates that gets pulled. And so, it's just a difference, and when that triggering event happens, the process is sort of the same either way, and...
I guess what I'm saying is, if the policy is that the triggering event normally happens at the CO, then we should either rethink the policy or we should abide by it. And we depart from it perilously.
So, I think that the difference here is that, as Commissioner Yakimini noted, there's multiple permits that it could, could trigger that event, and staff has decided in the, Condition 57, to have it be a certain one, and it could be a different one. And so, I'll go to my colleagues here, but I don't think there's anything sacrosanct about that. And staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Colin, but...
So, just maybe a couple points of clarification. So, what we can control through the conditions is the timing of the contribution itself. But the actual allocation of that contribution and the priority within the overall set of projects within the county is, is subject to the capital improvement plan.
Right.
So, I think kind of what you're speaking to in terms of the beginning of that process is really subject to a separate process that we understand would happen next year. And so, I guess I'm saying, for clarity, we're talking about two different things. The actual contribution...
Well, time is up for the evening, everybody.
Versus the actual dedication of those funds for a given project.
But then the timing, okay. I appreciate the clarification. That is helpful. All right. Commissioner Hughes, and then we will go to other folks.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. If we don't mind switching to one of the applicant's visual renderings of the park space, the green and the trees, if you don't mind. No, one of the good 3D ones where you see it like as a person.
This is relevant.
I know. Sure. That, that's the one. Stop. So, in two years, when this building is built, am I going to see that? It's a question for the applicant.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
That's actually a question for the...
That is a question for the staff, because this property is owned in fee simple by Arlington County.
I can speak to that if you'd like. So, my, my assumption is this is kind of a placeholder slide. So, we do not, at this point in time, know what park uses will be at the site. That's the whole purpose of having a visioning session and narrowing down alternatives.
Understood. So, this land, this nice green land, is county land that happens to be in your front yard, just as a point. There is a CIP process that involves a lot of equity stakes across all 20-some acres, which I'm not going to quote because I always miss it, so don't ones can catch me, of our county. And, square miles, thank you. Thank you. That kills me every time. This is my question and point. This is not a, you know, not a master Bryant Park, you know, New York super design, but it's green. There's grass, it's got trees. It's a wonderful interim condition that could lead to a final park design, and it doesn't preclude anything from being placed there in the future. And it delivers one acre of green space on day one, and it's one acre of grass, which is 50 grand. It's also, maybe if you like to put in some water, it might be another 100. So, you have $150,000 on your neighbor's property that may be there for a year or 10. It's something I would consider. It's something that, for my residence and for an interim condition, for the county allowing such an action to occur, I wouldn't be opposed to. But what I think it is better than is a giant dirt pile with chain-linked fence around it, a paved gravel lot that's left over from construction staging area that could sit there for a while, as we saw at Mosaic Park, which I know we all saw. My encouragement for staff is to allow this as an interim condition to, to occur, and my encouragement to the applicant is to think about your own best interest in whether 150K for one year, 10 years, or four years is better than what may be there in that time period. And that's what I'll say on that subject. I don't intend to support any motions trying to expedite the county process with respect to the CIP allocation. I think that this is a place for a wonderful park. I think it'll be a great park. I think this is not a great park, but it certainly is a park. And for an interim condition that's one acre of sod and a small fountain or irrigation system, I think it's something we should consider.
Mr. Beach, do you want to respond to the interim condition?
I just wanted to mention for a point of clarity. The sidewalks in this image are part of the street project that DS is currently designing and undertaking, and so they are actually going to be in place, and as well as the areas currently grass. The applicant earlier mentioned that they had interest in doing staging on this site, so any condition of a future agreement for them to do staging, if the park was not being built in time to be open at the same time, would be required to restore the area to grass in a good condition. So, just to clarify, there are some things that would also be in motion with that.
Yeah. Mr. Schreiber, and then I'll come to the...
Sure. Just, I just want to follow up on Mr. Beach's point, and I think this is what Mr. Hughes was alluding to. But if you're familiar with the site today, the northern portion is actually in a pretty good condition because that is the site that LCorp used as their construction staging. So, that was subject to a separate use permit and a license agreement between the county board and LCorp. Part of the terms of that license agreement is that not only were they paying the county rent for that, but they also had to stabilize that and restore it to a condition as it exists today. So, they stabilized it, they seeded it, it now exists as a grassy area. I know that sometimes the VDoc contractors hang out there, probably more so than LCorp would like, but we hope that, well, actually, next month that will be finished. And we would expect the same thing to occur on the southern portion. So, once again, if it takes a little bit longer for the park to deliver, I think that you could expect some type of treatment like this where it is stabilized, so it is not left in a manner where it's covered by gravel or any leftover construction debris or materials of that matter.
I promised the applicant that I'd come to them, and then we'll come back to you, Commissioner Hughes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate the point. Just two points we'd like the commissioners to consider. One is being, we have an opportunity here where we will be under construction for, you know, two years, and two knows how long across the street. It's disruptive to everybody. We will have more...
We will have more than 700 residential units in these two blocks. So, to come back one year, five years, 10 years later, in our front door, both on the residential and the retail, to do construction on this site, would be very impactful on both the southern portion and the northern portion. We have restored the northern portion to a better condition than we found it, because it was a parking lot at the time. But we do have, we feel that we have an opportunity here to deliver a fully-built, open space prior to, you know, and contemporaneously with the completion of this neighborhood, which is what we'd like to do.
Commissioner Hughes?
I just wanted to confirm, so I heard from staff, Mr. Schreiber, that what I'm looking at here is in all likelihood a very similar depiction of what the state of the delivered building could be, should a park planning process not have culminated, or the county board not have directed, a park to be constructed in time to be there with opening.
Yes, I would expect something similar to this, not exactly like this. But I would also just like to remind the commission that, again, this is county property. This is not property that is owned by the developer or anyone else. So, this is property that is owned in fee simple. There's also some leftover right-of-way issues that are there. So, you know, we know that we have additional work to do as we move forward with any type of park planning effort, and we need to deal with the real estate issues, whether those are by way of abandonment, or vacations, or other mechanisms. We need to secure funding, we need to do the design, we've got to secure the contractors and move forward. We hope to do that in a timeline that works well with the delivery of this project, at least for the southern portion. But those are things that we need to start a process on, and that's something that we will begin following the approval of this project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schreiber, Mr. Hughes. Yeah, I have you, Commissioner Siegel, but I had Commissioner Yakmini was on the list first, and then I'm coming to you.
So, I thank you, staff, for all of the discussion and the laying out of what the process is. I think what I'm hearing is that the developer's desire is that we start a planning process sooner, and that they might be willing to provide the money for that, and that the impetus, I think, well, not impetus, but that which is necessary to start a process is money, because we hire a consultant. So, right, Mr. Beach?
Correct. And staff time.
Yeah. I know that this is, this is the thing, is that we only have so many staff, and even if we have consultants, there still has to be a staff person that's working with the consultants, and that's difficult. That's, that's a lot of time and effort. The other thing I know is that the neighborhood is very desirer of this. I understand my colleagues' views about the CIP and how we have to be equitable across 26 square miles of things, but I also know that we, we look upon places of more intense development, that if they bring some of the community benefits and the funds, that then frees up some other monies in the CIP. Right? Because we don't have to pay, we don't have to have planning money in the CIP, we can get it from a developer, because they have done something more intense, they've, they've gotten an entitlement, and that's where it would be used. I'm a little curious to explore 57B, where we've put in that the developer has the option to construct the public space. Does anyone want to speak to that? Because I think some of the tension, perhaps, maybe that's not quite the right word, that I've been hearing, is that it's the county CIP, the county is to construct the park. But the applicant is interested in having the park done, because they don't want it torn up in front of their building, quite understandable. So, there might be an option for them to construct. Can somebody enlighten me on that?
So, the applicant's welcome to follow up, but we, as you know, we continue to negotiate the conditions up until the board meeting. That particular section is one that I think we've agreed to take out. It was, I think, creating some complications, and so there would still be an opportunity for the developer to do the construction, but it would be, you know, following a bid process.
So, correct.
That's accurate, yes. That we are removing B.
Was the developer desire of, desirous of that, or was the staff desirous of that? Just curious.
I would say that we're pretty close on the substance, but, as you all probably know, trying to negotiate these and get everything exactly right in a short period is not always an exact science. So, we thought it best to remove confusion and, and put this one aside for now.
And maybe just to clarify, my interpretation of the site conditions was not to design the park, but that the developer had, the applicant had the opportunity to build the park, after they would have participated in a bid process.
Oh, no, that is, that is my entire reading of B as well, that you all, in no way would usurp the county's policies and prerogatives of doing planning, of doing what is our usual process, when money is available, either through contributions or the CIP, that you had no intention of doing that. That's perfectly understandable. And now, right, we have the newly adopted Public Spaces Master Plan, which has, in many ways, really jump-started, if you will, needs of, across the county. I think we have a better base now to start from than we did five years ago for planning, that we already have some ideas of where there are certain facilities lacking, where we might need it. Staff is nodding graciously, that, thank you, Mr. McParkland, that's kind of you. So, I think we're sort of in a good place, and so I have an amendment that I will intend to offer.
All right. Thank you. All right, I want to go to Commissioner Siegel, and then Commissioner McSweeney, and then I want to move on to affordable housing, because we've talked about... Commissioner Weir, you're shaking your head. All right.
Well, this issue, I think, was raised by the community, raised by the developer, raised by a number of commissioners, and I think it's a complicated one because of the CIP. My understanding has been that the concern is that, once you get the money deployed for the plan, then the next step is getting the park built. But that will depend on the county's contribution, but the county's contribution won't be clear until, I believe it's April of next year, when the CIP process starts. And I think that has been the whole concern. How far does $1.4 million go? Well, that depends on the result of the planning process. But it also depends on the push-pull that occurs when we discuss the CIP. And I think that is somewhat problematic, and that we haven't focused on that. We focused on what would trigger the planning process. That, to me, seems to, something, that seems to be something that could be worked out. But the actual, what the applicant would like, and I think what the community would like, is the delivery of a fully-planned and built park within a reasonable timeframe of the delivery of the second building. And, excuse me. I would only like to point out, while I do appreciate that we work as, we operate as a county, we have certain needs, distributional issues come up, they get resolved with the CIP. On the other hand, the Altera is already producing revenue. So, given the community's concern about open space in Crystal City, and it's been enduring a biting concern, where there's no open space in Crystal City, you, one really has to kind of decide where the balance should be. I tend to want, would like to see this park delivered within a reasonable timeframe, would be ideal, if it could be delivered exactly when the machinery is removed, and you're ready to put trees up, so that perhaps you can screen your tenants from the chaos or noise that's going to go on when Penn Place is built out. So, anyway, I just want to say, the CIP process, I think, is, is the concern. That's what I read through these two pages of condition 57, and there's a lot of push-pull there that I hope can be resolved.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner McSweeney, I will go to Commissioner Weir, and then we're moving on to affordable housing, and I'll come back to you, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. Mr. McParkland, because we've done this process so many times, this, this public process, about what does it cost? Depends. Well, we've done the process, since the planning process, so I've got to think the planning process is pretty consistent.
Yeah. You know, each process is unique, but I think for this scale of a process, approximately, my guess would be about $250,000 to $300,000. And that's for the planning. Once the planning is completed, we need to do final design, which is, was that 15% approximately of the total construction cost? So, so the initial community conversation that we discussed would be approximately $250,000 to $300,000.
$250,000 to $300,000, okay.
Yes.
That's interesting. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Weir.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Yes.
So, there's $1.4 million that was a contribution from the Altera, that's actually sitting somewhere right now, in the account that you mentioned, Mr. Beach. And so, I understand that that hasn't been allocated for anything, and that that probably isn't allocated until you go through a budget or a CIP process, right? That's how that gets allocated?
Generally, correct. The money does not have to be allocated through a CIP process. That could be a conversation that the county manager made a recommendation to the board, county board, in how to spend those funds on particular projects. But generally, when money is brought in from a development project, a site plan project that resides in a trusted agency, that is usually resolved in the budgeting process through the CIP. Because I think, I forget who mentioned, Mrs. Commissioner Yakmini mentioned earlier, many times you will see projects in the CIP that, for example, cost $5 million total, but the county contribution is $4 million, because $1 million was identified from one or more funding sources that were private development contributions. So, generally, that is the, the way that money is allocated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes? Oh, sorry, Mr. Whitfield.
I'd just add, and we have the condition here, I mean, although Mr. Beach made the comment about the CIP general, I mean, this, this is a county trusted agency account dedicated for use in the implementation improvement of open space in Crystal City. So, I don't want you to think that it's a, you know, goes into a general fund with the CIP, this is specifically this area.
What I would just clarify, sorry, if I may, a trusted agency account is a, is not a general fund account, so it is in a dedicated account that is only associated with the funds, either solely or aggregated for similar purposes. So, counsel is correct, that is, is there. I did want to mention one thing with the CIP. This is new space as identified, so this is a project that has not been previously identified in the current tenure outlook for the CIP. So, I just, I just felt the need to make sure we were clear about that, that, you know, the manager will sort through his recommendations of where these various projects are funded, but it is a new project in the CIP, and not one of the ones that are in existing tenure timeframe. So, that will always be part of the conversation when, when the board is sorting through those issues. So, I just wanted to make sure people understood that.
All right. Quickly, and then I'll go to Commissioner Weir.
Thank you. Mr. Beach, what would it take to get some of that $1.4 million allocated to a planning process for this park?
I think that's a conversation that staff would, you know, be able to develop a recommendation to write to the manager for his consideration, but I would, you know, it is within the purview of the Planning Commission, or any other commissions, or a public body, or non-public body, to make that recommendation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weir.
So, as Commissioner Siegel pointed out, I think what everyone is really interested in here is the timing of the delivery, and the timing of the deployment of funds is really a proxy for the timing of the delivery. And, and we need to take seriously what we are saying in our recommendations. If, if we recommend to the board, and the board takes us seriously, that, you know, this park should be delivered ASAP, and we should do whatever is necessary to, to do that, then, you know, what the board, what we're effectively asking the board to do is to take finite staff resources away from projects that are, as Mr. Beach implicitly points out, in the CIP, and deploy that staff time towards a project that's not presently in the CIP, in determining how best to place that project vis-à-vis other projects that are in the CIP. And what eventually happens is that we're asking the county board to direct staff to spend less time on projects that are in the pipeline, projects that may or may not be funded by mitigation contributions, but are more likely probably funded out of general revenue, and then spend that time not in actually moving projects forward, but in determining how do projects that are already in the work plan work vis-à-vis this new project. And, and that isn't to say that this new project shouldn't be the project that we move forward, it's that we have to recognize that if we go to the board and say, we recommend that the board direct staff to pull out whatever stops need to be pulled out to deliver this park earlier, then what we are saying is, other parks, especially parks that are funded from the general revenue, and that means parks probably in less well-off parts of the county, need to be deprioritized, so that this park that doesn't presently exist, and isn't presently in the work plan, and could be put to a condition like Mr. Hughes described right above us, within a reasonable timeframe, can be accelerated in a way that's inconsistent with the, with the countywide approval and design process and study that, that is usually what we do. I, like I said earlier, have concerns about the precedent that we're setting in this direction.
All right, thank you. No, so, we're going to move on to affordable housing, because we will come back to this when people have motions, I guarantee you. I guarantee we'll come back to this. All right, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. I've got a few factual questions that I want to front. First, to the applicant, LCorp, do you currently own or control any other sites besides the Altera within the 22202 Pentagon-Crystal City area?
No, those are the only two in the Pentagon-Crystal City area.
All right. I missed your Altera site plan process. Did you deliver onsite affordable housing with that project?
Yes, we have 17 onsite affordable housing units there, and I think a contribution of 1.2...
In both projects you had within the 22202 zip code, you delivered onsite affordable housing.
Right.
I want to first say thank you to that. I have a question for staff now, if you don't mind. Staff, I'm reading here on page 16 of the staff report, it says, "It indicates as a goal for additional committed affordable housing units negotiated with projects approved above the base density, 20% of that GFA above the glove be provided as affordable housing on sites, up to 60% AMI." My question here is, is the applicant requesting bonus density here? I'm sort of confused about my CO zoning for a little bit.
So, I can address that. The way the CO Crystal zoning district works is that it establishes a base density, and base densities can either be established on a units per acre or an FAR basis, and then there is no density cap. Density is regulated by the form parameters. So, there is a base density which is prescribed, and then the applicants need to earn that additional density above that up to whatever. I believe the FAR on this project is somewhere in the range of a 6.5. So, the amount of density that we're requesting is not even 2OFAR over the base amount. So, what we then do is, we look at how is that additional density being earned. In this case, you're correct, Mr. Hughes, there is a goal of the Crystal City Sector Plan, that 20% of the additional density to be earned be provided by way of onsite affordable housing units. The Crystal City Sector Plan also has additional guidance in there in terms of how, you know, that is, that is the overall goal, and I would like to remind you, it is the overall goal of the entirety of the Crystal City redevelopment, it's not on a project-by-project basis necessarily, but it also recognizes that that may not be achievable on every project. So, we have to look at achieving other goals of the sector plan. And that's what we did with this proposal. So, the 12 units that are being provided, I believe that that represents approximately 13% of the additional density to be earned. And the reason why we propose that, or the manager is proposing that, is because what you see in front of you is a balanced approach, and trying to achieve multiple goals of the Crystal City Sector Plan. And what we knew from our analysis of the values and the density, and how much they were requesting is, it was going to be very difficult for us to achieve that 20% goal without putting all of the value of that package towards affordable housing. If we had done that, we felt we would have been neglecting other goals of the sector plan, namely, the open space improvements and off-site transportation improvements, which is why you then see the balanced approach. We know we aren't achieving that full 20% goal, but again, as was mentioned, these 12 units in combination with the 17 units that were provided to the project to the north, it's a pretty good start that we're going on. And I would just, once again, remind you of the balanced approach, whereas on the post office project down on 18th Street, we did achieve the 20%, because the goal there was, there was nothing else at that site we felt could really deliver on, so we got it there, and we make those decisions each time.
As a follow-up, I want to say first, thank you to staff. I do agree with your balanced approach here, and I want to follow up... And I want to follow up, should we anticipate that many of the projects we see converting to CO zoning include onsite affordable housing as one portion of the balanced package we should receive coming forward to us?
For all CO Crystal City projects, I would expect that to be, at the current time, that being the manager's recommendation, because not only are we looking at the goals of the Crystal City Sector Plan, we're looking at other larger county goals. And so the Affordable Housing Master Plan is also giving us that guidance. So I would expect for you to see that, and I think our track record has shown that for the three projects that have, or the two CO Crystal City projects that have delivered, both of them have provided onsite affordable housing units. This would be the fourth, and with each one of those projects, those residential projects have included onsite commitments.
And finally, just for the record from the applicant, will one of your accessible, will the two accessible units, one be at the one-bedroom level and one be at the two-bedroom level?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Yes, Commissioner Peterson.
I am interested to know, DHS has done housing studies to kind of figure out how we'll meet our affordable housing goals. So would they agree with the breakdown of the committed affordable units of five one-bedrooms and seven two-bedrooms for what's needed for the community? And also, I'm interested to know why they're going to expire after 30 years. Is this all you can negotiate, or do we think we're going to have other tools to obtain affordable housing in 30 years' time?
So we don't have housing staff with us tonight, but I guess to answer your question, so that, the breakdown of units, I mean, we generally don't get into, you know, unit mix in terms of a land use analysis, but that's one area where we do. And so the unit mix in terms of the affordable commitment, that is negotiated, and so that's captured in the conditions. The 30-year sort of sunset, I mean, that's basically our standard policy. So that's with all of our committed units, with, you know, a few exceptions, that's the expectation.
Commissioner Guerin.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen, have we had other projects where we had existing affordable units in the building and the building converted to condos? Mr. Schreiber.
So I believe I heard this question come up in the question period in terms of the condominium conversion. So we do have a condition in here, as you're aware, that really does try and protect the county's interests in terms of what would happen if a project does go to a condominium. We have seen these projects go from rental to condominium, and the purpose of this condition is to ensure that there is a mechanism by way the county can have comfort that even if the project goes to a for-sale component, that the 12 units here will continue to operate as rental. The purpose here being that that would be our expectation today, that it goes as a rental project. We just need to make sure that we still have the protection that they are provided for 30 years. We don't want to see ourselves in a situation where a project converts from one type to another, and there's some confusion by the new management company in terms of how those are to be operated.
Okay, well, I really appreciate that. I have some concerns, but you've seen this happen in practice successfully?
We've seen it happen in practice.
Do we need to be more specific in the conditions that the residents of the CAFs would still have full access to all the amenities and so on? Or is what we have in there sufficient?
I believe that this language is sufficient. This is something that, and I know that the commission is very well aware of this, this has been somewhat of an evolution over the last year or so. You've seen a couple iterations of this because we continue to work very closely with the county attorney's office in terms of crafting language that meets the board's intent and does provide, what is most important to us, the guarantees that those units will continue to be operated under their period. So here, if it does change, we have an assurance that it will continue to be provided as an affordable housing unit for that compliance period.
And we're fairly certain that this is sufficient also to make sure that we're not relocating someone who's in an existing unit?
Correct. The idea, as long as they are under an existing lease and they continue to meet the qualifications, that they could stay there and that their lease would not be terminated.
And the language that Mr. Schreiber was referencing is on page 82 of the staff report, so take a look there. Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. Just a quick question for the applicant. Is L-Cor currently structured as a REIT?
No, sir.
Staff, do we have language about, is it the county manager's discretion, or is there a preference with respect to a condo conversion to look for the 80% AMI? Has that been at all thought about as far as conditions?
At the current time, the, these are still listed for, as you know, at 60%. There is discussion as part of various elements of the Affordable Housing Master Plan of looking at higher income qualification ranges. So whether that be limited to 80% or go higher to, say, 100% or 120%, those are things that are still being discussed, and I would assume that the commission would be very involved in those discussions about providing affordable units at higher income ranges than what we currently cap them at.
Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
Does staff believe it has current guidance within adopted county plans that this commission has reviewed that would provide it with appropriate guidelines for considering a rental conversion and how it should treat onsite affordable at that position?
I believe that the conditions that we propose with this site plan currently capture our affordable housing goals until such time as the board takes action to change them. And I would specifically be speaking to, you know, if the board wanted to provide guidance, you know, looking at income ranges that exceed 60% or 80% is something that I know is of great interest to the community, and it's something that we will continue to look at, and I think mainly that's being studied as part of the missing middle analysis.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this topic? All right. Okay, yeah, community benefits, sure. Yep.
So I'm interested to know if there's a formula that you use to calculate your community benefits, and also since Arlington Public Schools is becoming one of the biggest parts of our tax dollars being spent, and looking at, on page 10, you listed out that this new building will generate 13 new elementary school students, seven middle school students, eight high school students, and each high school, or each student is about $20,000 for Arlington. So have you guys thought about, when looking at community benefits, you know, looking at, okay, there's an affordable housing contribution, which makes sense, that's a huge community issue, but Arlington Public Schools is also a huge community issue, so would there be any dedicated funds to that in the future? Have you considered that?
The way that, so from a formulaic approach, there is no right formula. Again, what we do is we focus on that additional density above the base, and I just want to remind you, and I think we wrote it in, or Michael wrote it in his staff report, and I would orient you to page 22 of the report where he quoted specifically from the zoning ordinance in section 7165A. And what that's doing is it's explaining the process and really focusing on that incremental amount of additional density, and ensuring that it furthers the goals, policies, and recommendations of the sector plan as well as other plans or policies established for the area by the board. And so again, you know, the sector plan speaks specifically to goals of affordable housing and open space and transportation, sustainable design, and these are all of the things that this project is meeting, albeit it is in a balanced approach. But in terms of looking at things such as, you know, similar to a proffer system that you see in other jurisdictions, that is not something that we utilize here in Arlington County. We do not have impact fees, we do not have adequate public facility legislation that enables us to do that. So we continue to not put forward recommendations whereby there be any type of tipping fee or any other type of impact fee where we go towards offsetting or providing any type of funds for schools or parks or libraries. Those are things that the general fund is accommodating through the budget cycle. So here, again, we're focused on this project and how this project can mitigate its own density, and then what it can do to improve its environment. And that's what the sector plan speaks to, and that's what we did here. So in total, you see a package, the 12 units, the $1.4 million for open space, another $90,000 for additional off-site transportation improvements. That really does get to, in this case, what almost the market value of that density was, and it was really based upon the purchase price of the site and other analyses and comparables that we looked at, and that's the package that you see in front of you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, I want to turn it to Commissioner McSweeney for a motion.
Thank you. And before I make the motions, I did want to say once again, thank you very much to Mr. Cullen and the entire staff who supported this effort, and also to the applicant for being so responsive through the whole process. All right, I'm going to take these individually. Chairman Trow.
That's a good idea.
I move that the Planning Commission find the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way for Old South East Street, running north to south along the northern portion of the western boundary of land Unit B, 411th Street South condominium, RPC 35001028, with conditions attached, is substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan or applicable portion thereof of Arlington County, Virginia.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question comes on the motion. All in favor? Appears to be unanimous. All right, Commissioner McSweeney.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend the county board adopt the ordinance to rezone from RAH 3.2 Multiple Family Dwelling and Hotel District to CO Crystal City Mixed-Used Crystal City District for the property known as 411th Street South, RPC number 35001027 and 35001028.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hughes again. Any discussion? All right, question comes on the motion. All in favor? Again, appears to be unanimous. All right, Commissioner McSweeney.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend the county board adopt the attached ordinance for an amendment to Site Plan 244 for a new 306-unit multifamily residential building with approximately 11,428 square feet of retail, and modifications of use regulations to include required parking, additional density, and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan located at 411th Street South, RPC 35001027 and 35001028, subject to the conditions of the attached ordinance.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hughes. Is there any discussion or amendment? Commissioner Yakimini.
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment to the main motion.
Yes.
I move that the following language be substituted for the first paragraph of Condition 57 on page 87 of the staff report. The language is as follows. "The developer agrees to contribute to the county $1,431,673 perennas, the quote 'public space contribution,' quote, close perennas, prior to the issuance of the footing and grade permit for the implementation of public space improvements limited to the new park at South East Street and Army-Navy Drive, North and South Parcels within the Crystal City Development District."
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ellen Tellme. Commissioner Yakimini, want to speak to your motion?
So I just put this forward, having heard from the applicant and having heard about the design portion, that the sooner that that might be able to be done, thus, the sooner that the land is available, if you will, for the implementation of the full park, whenever that may be. Because I think there's still a discussion about whether it's fully the CIP or if it's the CIP and developer. So the footing and grade permit, of course, comes much sooner in the, in the construction project than any of the COs. And thus, it allows at least a year, if not two years, who knows, to, for staff to be able to secure a consultant and allocate their work program to have someone work with them. I did not specifically reference the CIP with this. I think that there might be another amendment about that. I would say, though, just at this time, that the CIP is an interesting thing, and it's going to be very interesting this year, I believe, because of the commitments that the county made to Amazon. Because a lot of what's in there is infrastructure improvements that the county has said they will do, and those are funded through the CIP. So the CIP's projects are going to be, I think, tossed up in the air and greatly reorganized so that some of the things that were promised will begin to come in the years. And there are some things that we've had in the CIP that I suspect will be pushed to the out years that haven't already. And we have a history of doing that. Fire Station 3 back in the day in the early 2000s actually had a bond, and it had money, and it was in the CIP, and then all of a sudden, it was decided it wasn't going to go in the parcel the county thought it was going to go, and it disappeared and it moved to the out years for a very long time. And then it was brought back once we actually had a siting process. So it's not unusual for things to be thrown up in the air and reorganized in a CIP, depending on each. That's why it's revisited. It's not a standing document. So again, though, coming back to the notion of just being able to do some planning ahead of time, that's the spirit in which I offered the amendment.
Yes, I will recognize folks, but I think I saw Commissioner, do you have a question? Okay, I did see Commissioner Siegel. I'll get to folks. All right, Commissioner Siegel, I saw Commissioner Morton, then I'll come to you, Commissioner Tellme.
I'm going to support the motion. I think it's wise. I also would just add that the earlier in the process we can determine the scope of what this park is going to be, the better. It's simple math, and what I read in the conditions, which I gather will change when it gets to the board, is the concern is, if the community wants something very, very expensive, then that would begin, that would fall to, over and above the $1.4 million, that falls to the county to provide. But if the park design produces a modest plan, then there might not be a problem, and it might fit, the CIP might have a space for funding it sooner rather than later. So I don't think I want to add language to the motion, but just to suggest that when the park planning process occurs, that we get some estimates that go with the concepts. So we know what we're doing, and we know that there will be a further process that we really don't want to complicate the delivery of this park.
All right, Commissioner Morton.
I just have a few points of clarification, and I do want to say I share a lot of the concerns Commissioner Weir has expressed, even though I've said nothing but good things about this project, I have a lot of unease, just sort of plucking it out because I think it's good and sort of inserting into the CIP personally. But I think I would probably support a more narrow, if there's a way of accelerating through a different kind of trigger, the planning. I'm not sure, was the motion to allocate the whole $1.4 million to planning just for this park? Sorry, I just didn't hear the whole thing.
Commissioner.
And are there other precedents? Because people on the dais have said, oh, we're just changing the trigger. Is that something that we do occasionally, or would this be the first time?
Commissioner Yakimini, do you want to field the question about your language, and then we will ask staff to answer the second part of Commissioner Morton's question.
My language only says that the money is for the implementation of the park. In this, in the, I'm so sorry.
Oh, it's okay. So what does it, what does it mean?
Ah, implementation is a lovely word that can mean a lot of things. In the, in the staff's language, it says "design and implementation." I left out "design" specifically because I suspect that implementation actually can be construed to mean planning, construction, cost estimating, because it all goes to implementing something. You can't implement unless you've planned. So that way, the money is fungible. If it's only $250,000 to do the planning, then the balance can go to some, can go to another aspect of it. I actually see it as broadening the possibility rather than narrowing the possibility.
Okay, and then, Mr. Beach or Mr. McPartland, do you want to speak to Commissioner Morton's question about whether we've had other... question about whether we've had other triggers other than the CO for the footing degrade? Have you used a footing degrade permit as a trigger, which is the recommendation here? Or any other?
Sure. Well, one project that I worked on for multiple years is Mosaic Park. And what we did there was, we received 1/3 of the funding with sheeting and shoring, 1/3 of the funding at the first building permit, and 1/3 of the funding with the first certificate of occupancy. So, each project truly is unique and driven by a lot of community conversations. So, I don't, to the best of my knowledge, and I know that CPHD might know a little better than I do on this, but I don't think there's one formulaic solution.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you. Commissioner Lintelme, and then Commissioner McSweeney.
Yeah, my question actually goes to the applicant. If this almost $1.5 million gets moved up, it'll be by quite a number of months from when it was originally contemplated. Under the, and I don't know where your financing is at this point, but under terms of, presumably you're going to have construction loans for this, under terms of those loans, is this doable from a cash flow purpose? Would this be something the lenders would go along with? Does this increase the cost of the project? Is it a concern? Is it financially doable from your viewpoint?
If the funds were dedicated to the implementation of this parcel, the applicant would be supportive, and yes, we think we could probably get the funding necessary in time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McSweeney, then Commissioner Weir.
So, I actually like this motion because it does leave some wiggle room. I understand the concerns that were raised earlier by some of my fellow commissioners about tying it specifically to the CIP, and I still might make the motion, we'll see. And also, the fact that we might be bumping other projects that other people have been waiting for. And I think about things like Mosaic Park and some others that have been hanging out there for a longer period of time. So, I certainly understand the equity question, and I certainly support it, and for that reason, I'm going to support this motion, because again, I think it gives the flexibility to the county staff, but also, I think, puts a little pressure to start the process also.
Thank you. Commissioner Weir.
So, it's great to have additional flexibility with when we are able to deploy and utilize private funding, but what the motion doesn't do and can't do is accelerate the availability of public time. And I just am not comfortable with the precedent that we accelerate projects that are privately funded through the site plan process, when that is necessarily done at the expense of staff time on projects that are funded outside of the site plan process. I think that this starts us down a path of accelerating site plan-funded community benefits at a faster deployment pace than the general revenue projects. And this is a hard one for me, because a motion that makes, you know, a limited scope motion that provides additional flexibility is almost always a good thing, right? But I'm not over my presidential concerns.
Fair enough. I will come back to you for the last word, I think. Well, yeah, I'll give you the last word, Commissioner. But I do want to weigh in here, and do want to give Commissioner Steinberger, and I'll come back to you for the last word, if that's okay, or if anybody else wants to speak. Commissioner Weir, I understand your concerns. For my own purpose, this doesn't mean that staff's actually going to work on it. We heard from Mr. Beach that there are, you know, it has to fit into the work plan, and they have to have time to work on this. For me, this just, by, you know, passing this motion, and hopefully this goes into the final site plan, would allow staff, if they had the flexibility to work on this project, the ability to do that, because they would have the funds sooner. And so, it doesn't mean that they're actually going to, or that they're going to have the time to get to it any sooner. Mr. Beach and his colleagues may not. But at least the funding mechanism won't be the hiccup, right? We won't have to wait longer to get the money. So, for me, that's persuasive enough, because it doesn't tie staff's hands, it doesn't say that they have to do it, it doesn't mean that the CIP gets tossed around and we have to do anything any sooner. So, for me, I think it's narrow enough that I'll be supporting it. Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Weir's comments, and I understand, kind of, precedent's always important, and I think that we can and should be considering that when we take action as a body. I'm also persuaded, or I should say, I'm more persuaded by the fact that we keep having this recurring question, consideration, concern, frustration from communities when a specific community benefit is supposed to be dealt, dealing with open space, dealing with a park, whatever that's going to be in the community that's having the development, where the development's going to be occurring, and delays, delays, delays. And I'm just not sure what a reasonable length of time is for a community to be waiting, and at what point you go from what's acceptable to simply forever. And I don't think we're in forever, but I think that if the system we currently have for getting some of this development to happen, and to getting these parks from a concept, or not even a concept, to a concept, to a design, to functionality, to enjoyment, then maybe we got to make a change somewhere. And I'm persuaded that this is the time in a narrowly constructed amendment to make that change and to do something here, and if we're trying something this time, let's try it. Because if it's not working to this point, and we keep hearing the same concern from the community, from different communities, then clearly, something has gone, something is not working. And I'm persuaded that we should be trying a different approach here, which I think this narrowly tailored motion does, and so I will be supporting it for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I also fall in the same line as Commissioner Morton and Commissioner Weir. I'm concerned around the precedent here. I would just like to hear the motion again, to determine how narrowly tailored it in fact is. So, if I may just hear it again. Commissioner Yakimini. I move to substitute the following language of the first paragraph of Condition 57. So, if you want to follow along and look at 57, it just, instead of trying to do, strike and insert and all the rest of that stuff, I just rewrote it. And so, it's "The developer agrees to contribute to the county $1,431,673 perenns the (quote) public space contribution" (close quote, close parenth, prior to the issuance of the footing and grading permit for the implementation of public space improvements limited to the new park at South East Street, Army-Navy Drive, North and South Parcels within the Crystal City Coordinated Redevelopment District."
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
I was just wanting to better understand why you removed the word "design," because I was thinking that if the word "design" was left in there, then maybe the process could get started earlier, rather than having the county dedicate some regular funds to that process.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our answer is for Commissioner Morton, but go ahead, Commissioner.
I did. I just decided to leave it out, because I believe implementation can mean design. You know, staff may or may not interpret it that way, but I surely do. And I frankly want to make it a little more fluid. I want it to be able to be used for design if by some miracle, it's not needed for design in the consultant, and it's only needed for digging the dirt, fine. But I specifically did that because I want it to be as fungible as possible.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Morton.
Before, I think you said something to the effect, it could be up to, like, oh, if they didn't use it, they couldn't give it back. But I think what you're saying right now, you're saying that whole 1.4 million is limited to the park?
Right. Because it should be limited to the park. That's what the contribution is and has been calculated to be in the public benefits package. What I was saying is that it's a large number. We have heard from staff that what they have been looking at in their consultancy fees are $250,000, $350,000. So, the balance would still remain available, probably in the trust and agency account, which we actually don't know if it accrues interest, but we won't even go there, for the park, which is what it's set forth for in the community benefits package that has been negotiated between staff and the applicant and is still ongoing.
I thought you had changed this language.
All right. Commissioner Yakimini, I promise to give you the last word.
So, thank you. And I won't belabor it, because I think this is a really great discussion, and I understand my colleagues' feelings about the CIP, because Cherrydale has been the victim of changed priorities in CIPs where I live, and I get it. I think that it happens for reasons, and things change in counties, and sometimes our priorities change, and sometimes things come up that we hadn't anticipated. So, I think when we all get to see the CIP this spring, and it will come to Planning Commission, we're all going to look at it really carefully and with a different set of eyes. But for this particular project, I just think having the trigger available sooner rather than later just gives staff more flexibility. It's not going to commit funds that we may or may not have yet in the CIP. We'll see that to come. But it also comes at a time, as I think I had mentioned previously, that it probably gives our staff enough time to think about their work program. So, I think even those of us on Planning Commission have seen the planning division's work program change from year to year, and some things that have been on for a long time get pushed out, and other things that we never even thought we'd see, like elder care, all of a sudden is part of the work program. So, it's sort of life. And I think we deal with it as well as we can, and that's why we're all here as a group, because we all have different thoughts and contributions to make, and together, it all works out.
All right, thank you. So, the question comes on Commissioner Yakimini's motion. All in favor? All right, all opposed?
Can we read it again one more time?
No. 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 So, if you go to page 87.
Do you want me to read it again?
Yes. This will be the third time this is read, folks. You got to follow along at home. But go ahead, Commissioner Yakimini.
"The developer agrees to contribute to the county $1,431,673, at least I got to practice that a couple times, the public space contribution prior to the issuance of the," and this is where it changed, "the footing and grade permit for the implementation," notice I left out the word "design," "of public space improvements limited to the new park at South East Street, Army-Navy Drive, North and South Parcels within the Crystal City Coordinated Redevelopment District."
All right, thank you, Commissioner Yakimini. So, again, all in favor? Please raise your hand. All right, all opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it was just Commissioner Hughes opposed. So, now we have the main motion as amended. Any further amendments? Any further amendment?
Yes.
Commissioner Segal.
I do have an amendment, and I'll read it. "I move that Planning Commission recommend the county board, in recognition of the interest and importance of the delivery of this open space amenity to the community, prioritize the design, development, delivery, and funding," or "design, funding, development, and delivery," I'll reread that for you later, "of this open space park project known as the Teardrop Parcel or New Park in their upcoming CIP deliberations, and include it as a project in the 10-year CIP to be delivered within two to three years after the building," I would say, "the delivery of the building at 400 South 11th Street."
Is there a second?
That's not what you said.
Seconded by Commissioner Yakimini. Commissioner Segal, I would ask you to read that again.
I will read it again. "I move Planning Commission recommend the county board, in recognition of the interest and importance of the delivery of this open space amenity to the community, prioritize the design, development, funding, and delivery of this open space park project known as the Teardrop Parcel, New Park, in their upcoming CIP deliberations, and include it as a project in the 10-year CIP to be adopted in 2020," I'm sorry. This is a collaboration. Strike that. "and include it as a project to be delivered within two to three years after the delivery," after the building certificate of occupancy. Period.
Okay, so, two to three years after the?
Two to three years.
After the CO. Okay. Okay, so that was seconded by Commissioner Yakimini. I would encourage you to make sure your staff has that when we conclude. Also, Commissioner Yakimini, your motion, make sure your staff has that as well. Okay, Commissioner Segal, do you want to speak to it?
Yes. Generally, this calls for a funding, the contribution of the public funds to this project sooner rather than later. Obviously, that's what we've been discussing. Since the funding, and I do have a quick question here, the funding would only come through the CIP process. There's no other way to get other public funds. Is that correct?
That is correct. CIP would be the process for this.
So, we've talked about this a little bit. I do feel that there's three, there would be $3 million on the table for both parcels, sitting there in a fund. We don't know if it's earning money or earning interest. It sits there, it languishes. We do have one almost fully leased-up building performing, delivering revenue to the county. We'll have another building presumably, which will do the same. We've noted the desperation of members of Crystal City community asking for open space. We will be seeing a lot of building across the street, having trees lining this park, perhaps, and that will be determined in the design process, might help the various tenants living in those buildings to get through that construction project. For all those reasons, that's why I put this motion forward. I do recognize the tension. I do recognize the tension, but those would be my arguments.
All right. Yes, Commissioner McSweeney, and I'll come over to you, Commissioner Patel.
So, just to clarify, I did not make the motion, only because I know that there are members of the commission who wanted a time period on that, and that's the piece that I just was having a hard time with. However, as Commissioner Yakimini has mentioned before, the CIP changes all the time. And so, you know, while I acknowledge that it would be the intent to put this in the CIP, I think we just need to also acknowledge that things do get moved, even if they are put in the CIP. So, even at two years or three years after the delivery of the CO, by that time, the CIP could have changed, based on different priorities, based on, you know, school needs, other spending. So, anyway, that's why I didn't make that motion. I thought it would just be easier for Jane to make the motion with the time limit.
Okay. Commissioner Patel, and then Commissioner Hughes.
I just wanted to note that with the last motion, I did agree, ended up agreeing with that motion based on the fact that it was going to provide us some flexibility with the funding. But I do want to note that I plan to oppose this particular motion, for all of the reasons that have been articulated by Commissioner Hughes, by Commissioner Morton, and Commissioner Weir. I do believe that ultimately, as the county board has just recently passed this equity resolution, I think this falls directly within the scope of that resolution. I have a concern about prioritizing this project over others.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
I will be opposing this motion. The CIP, as we do know, changes every time it comes forward to years, and what was on it last changes. I'm reminded of my continual project that I will continue I'm reminded of my continual project that I will continue to harp on, and it's only relevant because the elementary school students who will be living in this building would be able to use the bus access road through the Arlington Navy Country Club property axements that was part of a site plan condition delivered with that building that actually the lawyers for the Army-Navy Country Club were so strategic when they granted that wonderful easement that made it self-canceling if we didn't actually spend the money to build it in time. These are the challenges that the county manager faces with the CIP. And we have to acknowledge that to the community, help communicate that to the community, and help everyone understand that the change we all may want to occur at the site may not be able to be accrued with all the other vested interests across this county. So if I had to take my opportunity to advocate for a CIP improvement in this project, it would not be for the improvement of this park. It would be for the improvement of the access road for Hoffman-Boston Elementary School behind Army-Navy Country Club, which would allow pedestrians, bikes, and school buses to get to and from the Crystal City Sector Plan area into the Columbia Bike 22204 area, breaking down the barrier that is 395. So to my colleagues who would like to up certain projects in the CIP, that project has continued to languish at the 10-year mark for at least the last three, and I suspect it will until past the de-easement passes with the strength of the lawyer team that supports Army-Navy Country Club. So if this motion passes, my next motion will be to move that one forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Weir.
I'll only add, and maybe this is implicit in the point that Commissioner Hughes is making, but I think that the point to balance CIP priorities is the CIP process and not elsewhere.
Thank you. Commissioner Guerin.
Well said, Commissioner Weir.
Commissioner Steinberger.
If the CIP process is broken, we should be fixing it. I'm not sure that this is the venue or moment to do that. I appreciate the comments that are coming forth, but I think clearly we're fighting a fight that is not before us on that particular matter. But I'm sure that the displeasure of many members of this board will be recorded to the five people watching this online, and then from there further.
Six.
Fair enough. Commissioner Yakimini.
So I am going to support the motion. And I'm not going to say I do so reluctantly because I'm a little concerned about the time period being put in at the end. But it is, to my mind, flagging to the board and to staff that as the new CIP draft comes out, and staff is already working on a CIP draft, let's all know that, they're not going to wait until January 1, that this is something that should be included. I mean, it's probably self-evident, right? Because we're doing the site plan, it's been there, and it's going to be there, but it adds emphasis to say this one will be, should be in the mix. And I don't know where the board's going to put it in the CIP, and I don't know what we'll see in the draft, but I just see it as adding emphasis, make sure it's in there.
All right. Commissioner Siegel, your last word.
Thank you, Commissioner Yakimini, for your support in that way. I do think there's a larger issue which this kind of opens up, not for discussion here, which is how, when you mitigate a project with an installation like a park, it's mitigation of increased density to allow 10 years to pass between the delivery of the building, the density, and the mitigation just doesn't make any sense to me. I think there needs to be some larger thinking about that. But basically, I would like to flag this as something that's important for that reason.
All right. Thank you. So the question comes on Commissioner Siegel's motion. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Did you get that? All right. You're quick. All right. So the motion fails. All right. Any further motion? All right. So we have the main motion as amended. All in favor? Any opposed? So this appears to be unanimous. I do want to thank the applicant for, again, as Commissioner McSweeney said, all your good work through the process, and thanks for your continued efforts. Also, I want to thank staff for your work on the project. It was a very well-run SPRC process, thanks to everybody involved, including Commissioner McSweeney for her great efforts leading it. So thank you all. All right. So we're moving on to commission business. Are there any, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes?
Chairman Schroll?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the minutes from September 9.
Is there a second?
And, oh, and September 11.
No, we do them individually, I think.
Okay. September 9, then.
Is there a second?
I think I have a change.
Okay. That's okay. What is, Commissioner Steinberger, what is your edit?
In the minutes from September 9, there's page 5 at the, towards the bottom. Commissioners should be singular, Commissioner Hughes.
You have penalized Commissioner.
But then they say Commissioner Patel.
Yeah. So it should be Hughes and Patel, or?
Yeah, we got to be one or the other, but there are not multiple.
Okay. I think staff sees that. Any other edits for September 9? Okay. With that edit, all in favor? Okay. Any opposed or any abstentions? No. All right.
Chairman Schroll? I move that we adopt or approve the minutes of September 11, June 19.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Guerin. Any edits to the September 11? Okay. All in favor? Commissioner Peterson, you should abstain because you were not in attendance. All right. Any opposed? And then Commissioner Patel and Peterson, you should abstain here.
I abstain.
Okay. Great. Two abstentions.
That's blame of you.
All right. Are there any staff presentations, Mrs. Schreiber? No? Okay. Moving along our agenda here. All right. SPRC report, Commissioner Guerin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Commissioner McSweeney for a really good SPRC report and for leading us through an SPRC process. I was delighted to hear all the changes, and I think it's going to be a really great project. So thank you. I know we won't have you much longer, but I really appreciate this. And I want to just run through this calendar that Ms. Johnson sends us, has a listing of all of the meetings, and we are all encouraged to go to as many of these as we can. We'll talk about how onerous a burden that is at our meeting on Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday?
What, Thursday?
Thursday. Thank you. But in the meantime, I just want to draw out, I want to point out that we'll have our meeting about the membership on Thursday, and then on Monday, we'll have the, hopefully final, the third SPRC for Met Park. That's going to be at the Aurora Hills Community Center again. That's a change from what we'd originally said. On Monday, the 21st, SPRC, the Veach Street Townhomes. Commissioner Steinberger, thank you for chairing that. On Thursday, the 24th, the SPRC, it's a, it's a concept SPRC. Thank you, Commissioner Schroll, for chairing that. On Monday, the 28th, Commissioner Yakimini, thank you, will be chairing SPRC for Key Bridge Marriott. On Tuesday, the 29th, Commissioner Hughes and Peterson will be chairing the SPRC for 1900 Crystal Drive. And on November 18th, Monday, Commissioner Bagley will be chairing the Artist Senior Living SPRC. So I just want to thank everybody for sharing the load here and chairing all of these. I wanted to take a moment and encourage all the chairs to review the plans and policies themselves that will impact the developments for which they are leading these SPRC processes. These documents and policies are online. We are welcome to ask staff about how to interpret those, what they mean, and also other commission members. And this helps us stay up to date on a lot of recent changes. For example, we have changes to plans, including new street typologies, open space priorities, and so on. So there's a lot there that can help us be informed and lead really full discussions going forward. And before I end the SPRC report, I wanted to give Commissioner Landt, tell me a moment if he wanted to give us a very brief recap from what he heard from the county board meeting, since we spent so much time on Commissioner Morton's SPRC. Thank you, Elizabeth. And just let us know where the board ended up on that, since we might not all have stayed up to speed on it. Thank you.
Sure. Just give me a moment so I can call this up, so I'll be able to talk to it. At the county board, I won't get into the other items that were before, which went through pretty easily, two of which were on the consent agenda. Obviously, what's of interest to all of us is the Westmont Properties, not Westmont, that's Form-based Code. It was for the Dittmar Holiday Insight. That was a very long meeting. It went till 12:35 Wednesday morning. There were 20 public commenters, with only about two or three of those in favor of the project. The rest either opposed it in some aspects or all and supported deferral. However, the board voted unanimously in favor of the project as recommended by staff. They did vote on some modifications, which were somewhat parallel to some of our recommendations, but they did not take up our recommendations. They did discuss, they wanted a parking management plan to include accommodating full-size buses. That was it, all they were going to do for parking. They also spent a good amount of time on the North Nash Street and Lee Highway intersection, as well as the facade along Nash Street, which included the entrance to the pedestrian passageway. They were not troubled by the location of the pedestrian passageway. They were somewhat concerned about its design along Nash Street and how it was not obvious. What they wanted that to be, they wanted that redesigned so it was more obvious to passersby that this was, in fact, a passageway which would go somewhere. They also wanted some changes to the entrances to that facade. However, they were not willing to have that go back to an SPRC. That would be, only go to the county manager.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up. I did sit through the meeting. County Board didn't question the parking ratio and hence didn't question the design. Our motion had to do with an overparked structure, which a board member, Gutschall, did agree with in one of his comments, and how that impinged on the possibility of, let's say, a pedestrian street. I was concerned about the precedential value. That was part of our motion. So going forward, I asked Ms. Johnson to pass out a map. This map comes from the proposal for a pedestrian priority street. I think at the time it was called a pedestrian priority and shared street. It was developed on July of 2016. This was a year after the Roslyn Sector Plan was put together. That is important for two reasons. One, we did not have that typology that we could refer to when we created the Roslyn Sector Plan. We did have it after the plan was adopted. And in fact, both the presentation by staff of pedestrian priority and staff street in July of 2016 referred to Roslyn and Courthouse, that these new typologies could be applied to those areas. On this, in the, in 2017, in October, the board adopted the pedestrian priority and at that time, shared street, two different typologies, which we heard and opined on and gave our recommendations on. I sent you all an email with that history and those links, and I would encourage you to just review them because Holiday Inn was the first major site plan amendment that we've seen. We will see, the next one upcoming will be Ames, and that will occur January or February. It's not, it's not clear. That's down the road a bit. But to prepare for that and other site plan amendments coming in for Roslyn, it's really important to take a look at the street grid. We talked about in our motion intent. And the intent relates to the entire grid. The yellow portions that you see are described in this map as pedestrian street slash way. I think it's very, very important to keep this in mind going forward so that we don't, as Board Member Gutschall said at the meeting, replace a failed system of skywalks with a failed system of tunnels. So I encourage you to prepare in that way. You have a lot of time. Beginning of next year, we're going to see Ames, which implicates 18th Street. I will say that I've heard soundings from a board member and others that the Holiday Inn maybe was a one-off. That, to me, is not the best way to make policy, but that's for them to do, us to advise. So just wanted to bring that all to your attention.
Really quickly.
When Commissioner Siegel mentions the street grid here, keep in mind, this is an emerging street grid. A number of these yellow lines and even some of the green ones do not exist today. They are what we expect to see emerge over the coming years and decades. It's important that we get these right. The tunnel was wrong, in my view. I personally do not want that to happen again, and I think we need to do everything we can to prevent that from happening again.
Great.
Very quick, just one more point. If you look at the MTP, we have now adopted pedestrian priority streets and shared. We'll see that indicated in this area as well. So it's made it into the MTP.
Right. Thank you for that. Yes, the pedestrian priority and shared street typologies came out of the Courthouse Square Addendum, which Commissioner Yakimini led, so that was through that process. Thank you for sharing those documents with folks. And thanks for the reminder that this is an emerging street grid that we hope to achieve. So let's move on to long range. Commissioner Yakimini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting for LRPC is going to be Wednesday, October 16. The GLUP will be updated and with any, so the map will be reprinted and be updated online, as well as the booklet. So if you guys have used the booklet or used this, and you, there are things in there that you, you'd wish we had, like instead of having to pull up the whole map and find out what color goes to CO2, you know, and what CO2.5 is, you know, high, medium, or whatever, we're going to put that in the booklet because it's so much easier to get to. So if there's other things, sort of user-friendly stuff, that would be good to know. We're also, I'm not unclear whether we'll be ready to go ahead with 2232 policies and procedures. We're trying to codify that so that it's a little clearer going forward. We are going to continue with Sherrlington, and we will have an open house of community meeting on that. And that actually will probably move to November 20 because of civic association meeting conflicts. So it's possible that on the 13th, we might be looking at doing a meeting about a proposal that has come in for the Courthouse West area. It's an informal name for it. It's actually the couple of blocks that are unplanned between the Clarendon Sector Plan and the Courthouse Sector Plan, and it's for the block that's immediately east of Whole Foods. And that will be the first time that we're going to start our new procedure where we have one meeting, sort of a scoping to say yes, no. Should it go ahead or should it not? As far as the Marriott site goes, the SPRC meeting in October may actually, on October 28th, be a second LRPC meeting so that we can continue talking about the site a little bit. The one thing we have not done is talk about building form and get the notes together for people to see. So we'll keep figuring that out. I know that it's hard for people to get to meetings, and sometimes we have three and four in a week, but I really do recommend LRPC to folks because it's where we set the vision for various areas. The site plans are really cool, and I like to go to the site plan meetings because it helps get it in my ear so that by the time it comes to the full committee, it's easier to deal with. But if you really want to think about an area, coming to the LRPCs and doing some of the planning work is really, really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner-- Commissioner McSweeney.
So we've been doing some thinking about how the JFAC, the Joint Facility Advisory Commission, may need to benefit from your experience, Commissioner Yakimini, with LRPC, and ways to maybe, as we move forward on the Schools and Public Facilities Master Plan, talk to the Planning Commission about that, probably through the long-range process. I did want to clarify, on October 16, you indicated that you do or you don't think that 2232?
I don't know. I wish, I hope we're doing it, but staff has been pretty definite about the GLUP reprint. Not as definite about 2232, and our pre-meeting isn't until October 14.
Okay.
Yes. Commissioner Siegel.
Quick request. We do have changes in the schedule, and I think this is, I hope Ms. Johnson can help us with this. When there is a change, the, I rely on this calendar, and sometimes there's a change, so I don't want to see the whole calendar reprinted and sent out. You could do that, or you could just sort of flag us, perhaps, Ms. Johnson, to say, ah, in the calendar, it was on this date, but now it's been changed.
I will do the very best I can.
I know, I know. Scheduling, I think, is the hardest job in all of Washington.
It certainly is. Been doing it 20 years.
And I do feel for you, but if that's possible, that would be helpful.
I'm going to speak in defense of the whole calendar. I know that I've missed one or two emails from Ms. Johnson in a row, and if I have to go, while I don't want to kill trees, if I have to go through the change log, then I'm, you're going to, I'm going to miss all the meetings.
There, also sign up for the updates on the county website. If you're not getting those, please sign up for them, so there is a place to get them that has all the meeting announcements. So if you're a planning commissioner that's not getting updates about when the site plans meetings are?
Site plans, yes, but LRPC.
LRPC too. Yep. LRPC and ZOCO meetings.
I'm not, I'm not getting the LRPC.
You should be signing up for those. So talk to staff afterward. Yeah. LRPC and ZOCO meetings, and you'll get the change notices for those too. All right. Speaking of ZOCO, Commissioner Ware.
Yeah, so the only, the main scheduled upcoming meeting is the one a week from tomorrow. It has to do with, with, in part, elder care issues, and in part, some of the Form-Based Code stuff that at this point, but hopefully not, well, probably even next week, that Commissioner Hughes was better able to describe last month than I was. So if you want to talk about Columbia Pike and the Form-Based Code and elder care issues and the ZOCO, and the zoning ordinance, we'll see you a week from tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. Public Facilities Review Committee.
Thank you. We have two things ongoing here. The fire station aid process is well underway. We have had three meetings. A fourth is scheduled in, within a week or so. That is going well. We have a schematic for the building right now that was received, received well. We've had good conversations on it. We still have more to go on it, though, so I am also wondering whether we may need to have a fifth PFRC, but that's still up in the air. But not because there's any problems, just because there are still a number of unresolved issues that were important to get to nail down right. But I do expect it to be wrapped up this year. The Career Center working, the Career Center PFRC, BLPC is up and running also. We've had two meetings. The last meeting involved pretty much transportation, for the most part. We got a presentation from the transportation consultants that did not leave a lot of time at the end for conversation, but that was okay, it was really just introducing the current situation at the site. We expect to have more transportation in meetings six, seven, and/or eight. These meetings are happening pretty much every two weeks. I will be out of the country until the 19th, and Commissioner McSweeney has graciously volunteered to stand in for me for both the PFRC, for the fire station, and for the Career Center. Thank you very much, but otherwise, that's where we are right now.
You going anywhere good?
Croatia.
All right. All right. That's, we expect a full report upon your return. Commissioner Hughes, in addition to giving good recommendations for Croatia, do you have an AUG report?
I'd rather talk about Croatia, but ZOCO primer, for those of you who missed last month, the yard district height regulations involve, as you remember, how the neighborhoods plan set back to our districts that don't yet exist and may currently be in the use as a golf course. And the Greenbrier regulating plan involves this pesky habit of our buildings and the plans having to move streets just a few more feet than they're allowed to, so both of which were reviewed and endorsed by the AUG in July. So on the development front, I don't expect us to have any development proposals in this calendar year, although I think the next project up for everyone's iteration should be in Q1, I want to say, which is the AHC project in Arlington View. So that'll be the next one coming up.
Great. Okay. So from my chair's report, which is pretty quick, the first is to make sure people are assigned letters. So Commissioner McSweeney will be doing the site plan for this evening. The next is just to kind of reiterate what Commissioner Geren mentioned, which is our SPRC membership working group is meeting this Thursday. So for folks who are on that, it will be at Langston Brown Community Center in the multipurpose room. That's what NPR stands for. So please look out for that. I did have to kind of do that mental calculus when you sent me in the NPR, Ms. Johnson, but I did decipher. The other thing to just kind of mention is, I believe we're going to have three, maybe four, meetings in November. And so I'm flagging that for folks now, which is that we're going to have a very busy November. Mrs. Schreiber just put up three fingers to indicate that.
Three hours.
So I'm flagging that for you all now. We have yet to plan that meeting, those meetings out. We will be doing that, I believe, on October 15, so next week we'll be having that conversation. Commissioner Geren and I will have that with staff. So we will give you more indication of which days to hold, but I'm just letting you know that that's likely to occur.
Your suggestion's correct. Three nights of meetings.
Three nights of full committee, yeah. Three nights.
But not to quit the third night.
No.
But it would not be election night, correct?
No.
We don't know yet.
We don't, well.
It should not be election.
It shouldn't, but we don't know yet.
The answer is it will not be election night, Mr. Chair.
Right. No.
That's not like a yes or no, that's like a...
My immediate reaction was, no, is it not?
It'll be when I schedule it.
So we will have a carryover, we will have a carryover meeting, and then I'm just letting you know that there will be a meeting, either another meeting that week, the first week, so it'll be like a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, or it's going to be a Monday, Wednesday, Monday kind of deal, something like that. So, I mean, that's how we've dealt with it in the past. We don't know exactly what it's going to be, but I'm just giving you heads up.
It would not be Veterans Day, I would like to say.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know that there will be a third meeting. We haven't, we have staff on this. Okay. And that, the last thing I want to mention on this, I guess, last two things, and then we'll adjourn, is, folks, folks.
We're meeting next Monday. We have Met Park, so expect those of you who don't have another commitment to go, even though it's Columbus Day.
Yeah.
Columbus Day is not around Holiday Inn.
Okay.
Okay. So the last, the last two things to mention, one is sort of, and I joined her to what I just mentioned, we're going to have three meetings in October, oh, sorry, November. We're going to have to be more efficient with getting through our stuff. We're going to, we had one item tonight, and it's 10 o'clock. And so there's a great saying in politics and in public life, that everything's been said, but not by everybody. And so if, right, exactly. So in November, we're going to have to be more efficient with our time. If you agree with something that somebody else has said, you don't need to pipe in and say it. If you disagree, we need to hear from you. But, you know, we're going to have to be more efficient with our time. I'll also be more restrictler in November, particularly if you haven't gone to any of the meetings, not the opportunity to get up to speed. So in November, if you haven't gone to a single site plan meeting, I'm not going to give you a long leash in terms of asking questions. If you haven't gone to a ZOCO meeting, you're not going to be given, afforded a lot of time to ask questions. So go to your subcommittee meetings, read up on things, and reach out to the people who lead these things. So reach out to our committee chairs, the people who are leading the site plans, to get up to speed if you have questions, or staff. You know who, what staff's leading everything here, so ask them questions, make time, ahead of time, to talk to them if you have questions. So that's it for this evening. Thank you for you all. I, the other thing, and you saw me do this this evening with motions, I'm going to give you one thing to say on a motion. I'm going to give the mover the chance to be done with it and wrap up, but you're not going to get a chance to go back and forth on it. We're going to hear you once, we're going to go through the end of the motion, and we're moving on. So with that, we stand adjourned.
And Giselle, you will note that I made motions by 9 o'clock, as I promised.